To operate holistic education and wellness center at 325 East Street, which is between Rayna's, the Mexican restaurant, and Flowline Sports. We believed that if we're approved for a permit, we could have that site operational and fully ADA compliant by spring next year. What I really want to talk to you about today is three key points that make us different from any other operator, and they're our commitment to education, to cannabis with a conscience, and clean cannabis. So let's talk about education. This is a visual depiction of what our dispensary would look like on the site in Lemoore. Essentially, we're keeping the beautification of the existing building with some minor modifications We'd also propose to have full parking out the front and to work with the city to make a couple of those spots ADA compliant, because we've got a lot of elderly patients that we would believe would come into our holistic wellness center. So that's what that looks like, an aerial shot. As they come into our dispensary or our treatment center, they would first be pushed into the learning center. And the learning center is a place where essentially they get educated about cannabis. We believe a lot of the new consumers in cannabis are soccer moms and conservative experimentalists, people that may not have tried cannabis before and are starting to look at it as medicine for a range of medical treatments. And therefore, we want to educate them at the first point of conversation. We want to educate them about the difference between oil and flour and indica and sativa. We don't want to rush them to the counter, because frankly, when they get rushed to the counter, they quite often buy something that isn't for them, and then they have a bad experience. Over the last two years, we've educated over 100 cities across California about compliance, ordinance, and change. At Element Seven, we promote holistic wellness, fitness, education, eating the right sorts of food, balance, as much as we promote cookies and brownies. Our staff will be educated and trained five times more than the industry average. Industry average is about 16 hours of training as they get to the counter. We have a minimum benchmark of 80 hours at Element Seven. We also run a campaign called What's in Your Cannabis? And this is an educational campaign, not focused so much at selling our products, but really educating people about the dangers of noncompliant cannabis, illegal grows, and what could be in their cannabis. And this is a campaign that we'd run at a micro level, but also a macro level across the state. We have a data alliance with a company called Brigade, which is the global exclusive holder of Weed Maps data, which basically means that we know what the people of Lemoore want more than any other operator in this room, because we have that data and that access to the Weed Maps data. We have people like Lynn Lyman on our team, who was the former Drug Policy Alliance Director of the State of California, working for Governor Brown, Stacy, who's our full-time community engagement manager, working with the constituents of the city and addressing their concerns. And Stacy is from Fresno, so she's very local. We have a partnership with UCLA to educate people through the Cannabis Research Institute. And we want to run community workshops and really sort of educate people about cannabis. My second point, cannabis with a conscience, we really walk the talk at Element Seven. One of the things we did recently, about a month ago, was hold an expungement clinic in Fresno, where we helped over 120 people clean their records and find meaningful education and opportunities for employment within the cannabis industry. And we ran that with the Big Red Church, Indica, and the Public Defender's Office. We commit to hiring 80% of our people from the local community and paying them a minimum wage of $22 an hour. We would also have a community advisory board with people like Jesus Garcia, who's very well-known in the community, and people like Tim on the board as well, from Flowline, and get them really, you know, involved in sort of reaching out to young people, but also, you know, the Latino and Hispanic community in Lemoore. We'd also commit to a 5 and 1/4% tax rate, which was above what the city was looking for, I believe, working with local businesses, supporting charities like God's Bread Box and Lemoore Christian Aid, having a Young Leaders Program that educates kids on proper business practices so that they can become future managers and executives within our business. And we'd also give 3% of our equity to staff through a stock option program. All of our staff would also commit to 40 hours annually of community work, every full-time staff, 10 hours a quarter. My last point, clean cannabis. We aim to be the cleanest operator in the market. We have a full-time chief compliance officer who used to work for the U.S. Attorney General's Office. We're fully committed to testing and quality control. We also don't just sort of test what happens here. All of our partners, our brands on our shelves, have to go through a rigorous 100-point testing program, which basically means if they don't meet minimum benchmarks and they're doing the wrong things in their community, they won't make it on the shelves here. In summary, I truly believe that we are experienced, we are proven performers, we keep turning up, we are absolutely committed to education and operating with a conscience and doing the right thing in the industry, and frankly, being the most tested, trusted, taxed, controlled, and compliant operator that the city of Lemoore could find. So, thank you.
And I'll just start with the community aspect, because I think that's important for everybody, right? Living in Fresno and being the community development person, it's important that they have someone local that lives here. My family's lived in the valley for 100 years. My great-grandfather moved here in the 20s and farmed in this community. So my kids are the fifth generation living in the valley, between Visalia, Hanford, Lemoore, Fresno, and we have all of us, right? So when they brought me in, I said, "It's going to be my conscience, okay, to say, if we're going to say cannabis with a conscience, then we got to have someone local here. We got to have someone that's living here, that's breathing here, that's been here over 100 years, that's saying, how are we going to give back to the community? How are we going to educate the community? And how are we going to really be involved?" I'm at every single one of my city council meetings in Fresno, so I know what's going on. So if somebody needs me here in Lemoore, I'm 45 minutes away. Someone needs me in Turlock, I'm there. These community advisory boards, we're going to make sure that I'm here locally so that you have a contact person here for you, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we doing questions now, later?
Yes. How did you guys find out about this place? Lee Moore, small Lee Moore.
Well, I know about Lemoore, because I come here often. So I know about it.
Yeah, I first came to Lemoore to actually surf.
For dispensaries?
No, I came here for one of the surfing events a while back, and then when we heard that the city was interested in finding operators for cannabis permits, this is exactly the kind of place we want to be.
So you found it through advertisement? How did you find it?
There was some industry news on the internet, talking about the city was issuing permits. But, you know, we've been very active in the Central Valley for probably the last two years, working with as many cities as we can to help them form ordinance and talk about the application process.
I have a father-in-law that's retired military, so we would come to the base sometimes.
Okay, absolutely.
Yeah, and then Tachi, of course, is really close, so a lot of us from Fresno come there.
What businesses do you guys have in the Central Valley so far?
Yeah, so we are at the final stage of approval for a permit in Fireball. We're also...
Fireball?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We also put applications into Hanford, into Turlock, where else we...
So nothing's going on right now, but you guys trying to get plugged in?
Yeah, the Central Valley, frankly, when it comes to retail, there haven't been too many communities that have really opened up. It's Woodlake, I believe, and Farmersville. But, you know, we think this is a great community, there's a lot of education opportunity.
Absolutely. Any council members have questions?
You have a question, if I may, please? Because I'm looking through City Attorney, can I talk something about the developments in the development? A question out of the development agreement this time, or is that to wait?
So, Council, the development agreements are just samples for you? They're not being approved tonight, they're not final in any manner?
Can I ask?
But you can ask questions related to terms that...
Just general questions.
General questions, yes.
Question is, is at the, at 325 East Street, right? Is where you're looking at? You're just looking at dispensary there, you're not asking for anything else, is that correct?
We're only looking at a dispensary at that location, in terms of a cannabis license, yes.
Right. You're not looking at nursery cultivation, processing, manufacturing, distribution, or non-storefront delivery?
We would be looking to do a delivery service off the back of our dispensary, but under state law, that is a, if you have a dispensary, you can do delivery now under state law. But yes, we would be looking at a physical retail store with a delivery component.
Okay, just need to confirm, because I'm reading out of the agreement, which is just public, you know, everybody has it.
Sure.
Just to confirm, you're only looking for dispensary?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then, delivery?
Yes, so under state law, under the Medical Adult Use Cannabis Regulation Act, the Safety Act, dispensaries now come with the ability to deliver from that location.
I just wanted to make sure, clarify that, because, you know, what I read here is a little different than what's presented.
Sorry, okay, yeah. We believe delivery is important, just because of elderly customers and patients that maybe don't want to go into our store, so a delivery business would absolutely be key to our operations.
And you said 5.25, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a couple of questions. First one, you talked a lot about medicinal, and I know that you don't have dispensaries open in California yet, but what percentage of sales do you believe, or, you know, a place tied up in Colorado, is medicinal versus recreational? Because you guys push the medicinal aspect of it, and obviously, percentage of your sales is going to be recreational. Do you have numbers on that?
You know, I think there's a lot of medicinal patients that don't necessarily go out and get a card these days.
Absolutely.
So in terms of medicinal use, I think that would be closer to 40% of customers, but actual people with a medical card is probably going to be 1 in 5, 20%.
Okay. And you also mentioned a partnership with UCLA, and is that through their medical school? Is that through, what part of UCLA do you have a partnership with?
The guy called Jeff, Dr. Jeff Chan, runs that program, who's a very good friend of ours, and a personal friend of mine.
Yes, sir.
Jeff set up that initiative. It cuts across multiple departments within UCLA. Essentially, it's research-focused, so they'll work in terms of research with the Department of Chemistry, Department of Biology, even the Department of, you know, Advanced Business Studies, depending on what the thing is. They also have a large sports medicine department there, and they're working on cannabis for athletes at the moment, doing a lot of research.
Thank you, and just one more question. I appreciate the $22 an hour average for your employees. How many, you said there's going to be 80% local, how many employees do you foresee employing at your dispensary?
Yeah, with a delivery business, 12 local employees.
12 local?
Correct.
Thank you.
I have another question, if I may. On your other, basically, what is your, what would be your safety program? You know, security program? What would you, can you expound on that a little bit?
Sure, so there's almost three programs. So there's a security program, there's a product safety program, and then there's a site safety program. So from a security perspective, you know, every door has a thumbprint, as well as a fob card, as well as two cameras in every room, multiple procedures for how product is quarantined and then transferred through to different rooms. We'd have a security guard on site that would ideally be secured with the assistance of the local police department. We work very closely with fire to make sure that there's sprinklers all the way through, and there's key boxes for the fire department, and we're constantly engaged with them. Data backups, you know, we put motion detectors on the roof, frankly, because a lot of robberies take place through the roof. We obviously do background checks on our staff after we've offered them a job, because we're a fair-chance employer. So there's, you know, and there's a whole heap of procedures around deliveries, made to and from, how cash is handled, how cash is taken out of the facility, how things are stored at night. Everything goes into a vault, which is bolted into the concrete and isn't going to be moved. From a product safety, we obviously, distributors test the product, but we also have our own internal testing program to make sure that packaging is compliant, labels are compliant, that the product is of the highest integrity and quality possible. So we try and exceed those state requirements for testing.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Last question. Are you guys out of Chicago? I mean, you...
So Robert, the founder, is actually from Chicago, came out to California in 2014.
Okay.
But we're primarily, we have two offices in California, one in the Bay, in Pleasanton, and then one down in Los Angeles.
Anything in Illinois?
We're actually very interested in Illinois as a market. Illinois is opening up for licensing in about six months from now. We're also, you know, we're applying for licenses in states like Missouri and New Jersey.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Okay, you guys are nationwide. Okay.
Thank you.
So, next up, we have humanity.
Nathan, do you want to let the public ask questions too, or no?
So, the study session, go through all the presentations, and then you can open it to the public if you think...
Gotcha. And council members, the draft development agreements in front of you, when they come back for finals, so we have to do a 10-day notice, has to come back with regulatory permits for final approvals, the stuff they're not asking for will be stricken. These were templates that included everything, the ordinance. So my apologies on that, but we'll have them cleaned up for you.
Who'd you say was next?
Humanities is up next.
Okay. My name is Bob Coroco, I'm the Chief Operating Officer.
Can you get to the mic? Appreciate it.
What was your name? I'm sorry.
I'm used to walking around. My name is Bob Coroco, I'm the Chief Operating Officer of Humanity Wellbeing. And we're here to really earn the right to open a dispensary here on Lemoore. So I'd like to go through a couple of things. I know we only have about 10 minutes, so I'll keep it pretty snappy. If I could learn how to work this, great. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to cover who we are, Humanity Wellbeing, our approach, which is pretty unique and different, and humanity team, touch on that, and then talk about what we're going to do, not just open a dispensary in Lemoore, but bring additional benefits to the city, I want to touch on that, and then want to talk about the local connections that we have to the city of Lemoore. So I want to go ahead and read the vision. So we're looking at a bigger picture than a lot of companies out there in the marketplace. Our vision is, and I'll just read it, is to define the future of North America's adult use cannabis industry by building an interdependent network of cannabis-centric consumer packaged goods, retail dispensaries, and contract manufacturing operations that advance consumer shifts towards natural and holistic health and wellbeing. So a couple of things that's really important for us, we're looking at this bigger picture as a company. We're looking at the consumer packaged goods side and bringing true proprietary products to the market. The retail side, and that's what we're here to talk about today in Lemoore, but also manufacturing. We do manufacturing in Southern California. So our approach, and you talk about in business, it's the horse for the jockey. So in terms of the horse here, we're talking about our approach is really about learning, and it's about education. I heard that already from another company. But it's really about getting the right products for the consumer. And, you know, we're going back to the way it was maybe hundreds of years ago, so it's rituals rediscovered, and really education around some of these products, and really walking them through, walking the consumer through. And so our approach is very open, and it's, you know, the products are on display, it's very welcoming, and experience is very foundational to how we're approaching this. So one of the things that we thought was extremely important is take a very unique and differentiated approach here. We hired one of the preeminent experience agencies in the United States, a company called Brand Bureau, and really taking a look at how we could be more like an Apple experience with a dispensary. So it's really about the experience, it's about showcasing the product, it's about education, it's about a lot of service and budtenders right there to educate and inform the public. And so that's everything, from our look and our feel, to our processes, to our brand positioning, everything we do is going to be, and has been, very, very thoughtful, and we're looking to bring that to bear in the marketplace here in Lemoore. This is a little bit of a, I guess, a bit of a tease in terms of some of the color schemes. You know, we want to get away from what you would think about as a dispensary. You know, you probably don't think about positive imagery. And so this ritual rediscovered in mindful medicine is truly a big cornerstone of our approach to this entire marketplace. So this gives you a little bit of a feel to what we're bringing. Talked about, we talked about our approach to this business. I also wanted to talk about the key executives in the company. And, you know, it comes down to having the right idea, the right approach, but execution, how you do it is critical. So a couple of things, I wish I could walk away. You guys hear me?
I can hear you, but...
So I want to talk about a couple of our key tenors. So James Schumacher has been in this business for a very long time. He's been an advocate out there, he's created several natural medicine companies, he's produced documentaries to educate the public in America about cannabis and the dismal value of cannabis, very, very proactive. He founded the number-two retail dispensary in the United States, and we really brought some of these concepts to bear in our first dispensary, and we're going to actually bring learnings from this number-two dispensary, we bring it to everything to... And then we actually, he built the first trade organizations for the industry that began to try to mention. He shaped the laws. Matter of fact, he shaped the laws in this state of California, we sent that here to Lemoore, and your ordinances here in Lemoore, based off the work that he did in this state of California. So he's our visionary, he's our partner, and cares deeply about doing this the right way. Jagajody, think about the visionary, this is our marketer, CMO, and he's got a lot of consumer packaged goods experience. And he's a real heartfelt guy, he works with some of the celebrities in Hollywood, doing foundational work, just trying to make a difference out there in the world. So he's the author and founder of the Young Person Do Foundation, again, Ross Wissens and Mr. S. in Hollywood. So visionary, CMO, there's this guy over here, the Chief Operating Officer, that's me, I'm new to the company just a month. And, you know, I'm the guy, integrator, the guy who makes it easy, the guy who makes sure things are done, meets the standard with consistency. So a little bit about me, I'm talking about myself, but seasoned veteran across multiple industries. I was an executive in a car company, worked overseas in nine countries, did a lot of things there, ran two of the largest internet companies in the United States, I was a CEO of a biotech company, and you're there. You're, sorry, can you guys hear me? I feel guilty... Talking like this.
Sir, it's because it's recorded, and the recording can't hear you.
My apologies, okay. So you're probably wondering, you know, what does he know about cannabis? Not a whole lot, but I'm learning fast. Matter of fact, these guys, James and Jagajody, specifically went after me as an operator, a proven operator across multiple industries, as the guy to come in and do this, because the vision for the company and what we're trying to achieve, they didn't feel like the talent in the general cannabis industry, from their point of view, was really not able to pull it off. So they actually talked to me for the past year, and I've agreed to come in and do this. So I'm excited for this opportunity. Okay, let's talk about the Lemoore, I'm so used to walking around, I apologize. I want to talk about Lemoore added public benefit, because really, that's where the rubber hits the road. So not only are we going to run a business without, I call them negative externalities. So it's great to have the tax base coming into Lemoore, but if problems follow, that's not good. So we're committed to doing this the right way, that's extremely important to us. So first thing is a promise and a commitment to running the business the right way. The other things we want to do, city monuments. We took a look at how can we bring tangible benefit to the city of Lemoore? So we thought about a couple of things. There are no city monuments when you enter the city, and that looked like a great opportunity. So we want to provide at least two city monument signs, very high-quality monument signs, to locate them at the entrances to the city. In addition to that, three-directional signs, directing traffic to and around the downtown area. So that's another thing we felt like we could bring some additional value beyond running a high-quality business. Another thing is the Fox Street beautification. So we drove around the city, we've been asking questions, and it looked like there were some areas of the city that could use a little love. So we identified this area between Fox Street and West Hanford, Armona Road, and so between that and Cinnamon Drive. And we want to make it look nicer. So we want to do some dry scape and some shrubs to beautify that area of the city. The other thing, I talked about the local connection. So we wrote the ordinance in Southern California, Encinitas in particular, for dispensaries, sent it off to Lemoore, so we have that connection in that your ordinances are based on some of the work that we had done before. But also, we have a local investor, and I think Lorenzo, Lorenzo, are you here?
Yes.
Please, I would love for you to say a few words.
It's an honor to be here. I'm really excited about the opportunity to be a part of, hopefully, an opportunity to be involved in cannabis. For me, it's a lot more personal than just the opportunity for finances. I'm lucky to team up with this great company to invest in, but for me, it started over nine years ago. I have twin daughters, Nylee and Mia, they're 16, I'll be 16 in December. They go to, you know, and at three months, I'm taking my daughters in for their shots, their, you know, their immunization shots, and they both spike, they both get fever, they spike, one has a seizure. Perfectly okay daughters, and now here we go. In and out of the hospital, from Depakote to, you name it, the different meds, or, you know, 10 different meds that one of my daughters have been taking and been on. So as a parent, you do anything you can to try to help your kids?
I'm going to give you two more minutes.
Okay. As a parent, you do anything you can to help your children? And you guys probably saw this still about eight or nine years ago, came on called Charlotte's Web, it's on 20 Minutes, on 60 Minutes, and Charlotte's Web is a, it's a, you know, CBD that they were giving to kids, and it helps stop the seizures. I reached out to the Stanley Brothers in Denver, Colorado, and the relationship began. My daughters went from taking triglycerides, the different, all kinds of different meds that she was on, to down to two. Her speech, the slur, all the different things, having 40 to 50 seizures a day. So this thing has been, I've been, this has been not three months, four months, five months, that's why, you know, I had Nathan and had, you know, Bill and Zee come out, and wanted them to see the high quality, the mayor as well, wanted them to see the high quality of the people that I am a part of. So I know what this, I know what cannabis, and I know what CBD can do for the youth, I know what it can do for many of my fellow constituents that played in the National Football League with all the head trauma, CTE, and it's really, really taken a lot of these guys out, and now even the NFL is looking at making legalize for guys to be able to take it. So I have over, you know, my family's been in this town for over, you know, 75 years or so. So really, really, this would mean a lot to be able to be involved, and this is not something that I got involved with two, three months ago. We were one of the first that wanted to reach out to the city to let them know all the health benefits that you could get from this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can you do any questions? One more slide, and I would talk to you... One more slide, and I would talk about the decimal. These are proprietary, followed by energy welding, focused, I'm just, we have some other products that we're.
Excuse me. I just want to say, it's 10 minutes, I wanted to, I know you got a lot that you got to say, and I'm.
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we have any questions from the public?
No, counsel.
Counsel?
You didn't mention a location of your proposed dispensary. Is it, do you have the location?
Yeah, we've secured 323 Heinland.
323 Heinland.
323 Heinland, and we have an option on another property as well, depending on, on how licenses are awarded.
How many dispensaries does Humanity currently have?
We have, we have one operational right now. We've got others in the process of, we're bringing up.
Question. Your safety and security plans, I mean, can you elaborate on those, please?
I, I wish I could talk about that. I've been with the company just a month. And so my, the founders and the other, the other founders could not be here today. But I could tell you that we've written the ordinances for this, and we, we have run the dispensaries. We've run, the founder of the company has run 15 different dispensaries. So very well versed there.
Thank you. If I could add on to that, you say you have one dispensary, yet the founder has 15. So is the founder, how involved is the founder?
Over time, over time. He has, he has been selling his dispensaries to focus on upleveling and doing premium quality dispensaries.
Okay, so Humanity as a whole corporation has one operational and.
Correct.
Obviously, a couple that are.
Correct. We have, we're working on several in San Francisco, Oakland, Chula Vista.
Yes, sir.
And some others as well.
Okay, thank you.
I'm looking for number one. You guys are number two in the United States. Who's number one? Are they here today?
I, I don't know who number one is.
Okay. Anyway.
I don't think he's going to tell you that, Ed.
I know, but I thought they might be here. About taking ideas, we took some ideas, you were saying, what ideas did we take from you guys?
As it relates to the ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
I, I, we wrote the ordinance in Encinitas, California, and we sent it over to, to city council to review.
Okay.
And use that as a model for your ordinance. That's, that's my understanding.
So, okay. I had multiple, multiple people early on during negotiations sent over draft copies and copies of other city ordinances that I was using to educate myself. So, but as written, our ordinance was done by our city attorney.
That was nice of you. I appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Okay.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
That it?
Okay.
Okay, so next up would be Natural Healing Center.
Hello, everyone. My name is Helios Dayspring. I'm the founder and CEO of Natural Healing Center. I am here today to tell you a little bit about my company and why I think NHC would be a great fit for Lemoore. I come from a small community very similar to this one, with a population and demographic almost identical. A community surrounded by agriculture that's built off of small businesses and close community relationships. Over the last 10 years, our community has seen tremendous economic growth, and we have been extremely grateful to attract, settle, and develop several new industries in our area. One of these new industries is cannabis. Cannabis is an industry that I have devoted the last 16 years of my life to. Starting out as a laborer for a medical grower when I was 19 years old, I could have never imagined the road that cannabis would take me down. Full of roadblocks and hurdles, we have made the appropriate moves to becoming a vertically integrated industry leader, achieving successful operations one at a time for the last decade. My company now holds a portfolio of over 25 properties totaling over 2,000 acres. Each project its own productive cannabis business that holds its own unique challenges that my very qualified team has navigated their way through. My team and my company are not an overnight success. This has been a slow, methodical climb to where we are at. Some of my teammates have shared my vision and have been with me close to 10 years, pushing side by side for the opportunities that are here in front of us today. NHC is not a business that is looking to go public for the purpose of inflating value or a business that is being built to be sold off to the highest bidder in an attempt to make a quick profit. I am a slow and steady businessman that values the opportunities and relationships that I have been blessed with far more than the revenue streams that flow from my operations. This is my life's work. This is why we are different from other companies. We have passion for this business and the positive impacts that it brings not only to the employees and the consumer, but passion for the economic benefit that this business brings to communities that embrace new industry. We have never let money change who we are as an entity or people. We display this by giving ownership to employees who show the same personal drive and sacrifice for the overall vision as a leadership in the company. We have rewarded nine different employees so far with ownership in different retail and cultivation facilities. This ensures the kind of care and management for our business that I expect. Cannabis has uplifted my friends, my family, and the citizens of my community. I feel that it is my duty to present this business in a respectable, responsible, safe manner that not only the user can feel comfortable with, but also the community can feel proud of. Proud of how this business interacts with the citizens, proud of how it is run as an operation, and proud of that it is, and proud that it is an economic force that helps support the overall ecosystem of the town. I urge you, the decision makers, to look at the businesses that you feel will be the best long-term partners, that share the same values of what your town represents. I know it is equally important for my business to carefully select the markets and partners that we wish to do business, business with, as it is for your city to carefully select a responsible operator who can rise to the expectations of Lemoore. Now, my CFO and partner, Jake German, will give you an overview of our business and our plans for Lemoore. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hey, why, why you guys are switching? Why don't you turn these signs around so everyone else can see them too?
Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Jacob German. I have a deep love and respect for this community. As a youth in Lemoore, I spent the majority of my time playing sports, working on my family's farm, and volunteering at our local fire department, something that members of my family continue to do to this day. As I grew older, I ventured out to Fresno State. I realized I had a passion for business and finance. Since leaving college, I've taken a role with several large companies as financial controller. In my experience with these companies, I learned what it took to run a successful organization and witnessed firsthand that the leadership and passion in a company is what makes a company special. When I was introduced to Natural Healing Center, I immediately recognized this passion and leadership and knew that this was a great opportunity and fit for my skill set. I jumped on board over a year ago and witnessed exponential growth in every facet of our company, winning not only best new dispensary in Slope County, but also best new business of the year. With this, we have successfully introduced cannabis to the city of Grover Beach and the county of San Luis Obispo. We are now an economic force in Grover Beach, bringing in over $1 million a year in tax revenue. I have firsthand witnessed the benefits not only to the city in form of an expanded budget, but also I witnessed thousands of people being helped by this medicine. I'm extremely grateful to be able to bring this opportunity of this magnitude back to my hometown of Lemoore. I believe this business will have a real shot at bringing revitalization to the down-down corridor that is desperately needed. We estimate 500 people a day visiting our store. This gives us surrounding businesses 500 opportunities every day to capture a piece of that foot traffic. As an owner in this business, I will be personally responsible for how we interact with the citizens, the surrounding businesses, and the council. As a local with this whole family watching, I can truly tell you I want to do right by the city. Now I'll introduce you our COO, Nick Andre.
Good evening, council and staff. First, I want to commend you for moving forward with this cannabis ordinance, believe it's going to bring a lot of benefit to the community. But we urge you to take into consideration who's going to be the best long-term partner to operate at the highest standards and to provide consistent and ongoing benefit to the community. We believe NHC is that operator. We have a long and proven history in the industry, and our company has local ties making Lemoore a special place for us. So I've handed out a packet to all of you, and I just want to go over some key highlights of it. So the first being just a general overview of the company on page five. And that's going to show you.
Nick, which one are you talking about? I'm sorry.
The one that's binded, okay. And so on page five, you'll see an overview of our company. So we have a centralized management organization where myself, I serve as the chief operating officer, Jake and Helios, who you just heard from, as well as additional members of the executive team, manage our entire business from retail to distribution, manufacturing, and cultivation. We currently have three retail licenses, one in Grover Beach, one in Morro Bay, and one in San Luis Obispo, where we've ranked first place in all of the city's processes. We hope to add a fourth here in Lemoore. Then we have a huge bread and butter part of our company is the cultivation. We have multiple properties in Santa Barbara County and San Luis Obispo County, as you see listed with acreage amounts present. We have a strong team, not only just us here today, but also that includes Bill Shimshack, which you can see on page seven. Bill Shimshack was the former director of housing and urban development for the federal government under two presidential administrations, and is now the president of Preservation Partners, the second largest affordable housing, affordable housing developer in the United States. His long history of compliance-based business experience speaks volumes of his confidence in our company. Additionally, we have people who are head of compliance, architecture teams, legal representation, community outreach managers, advisory board members, and more. And one special person I want to talk about is our head of security, Chris Boyer. Chris is a veteran, and his company has been specializing in cannabis security since it began in Colorado many years ago. His entire company focuses on, focuses on hiring other veterans, and all of our properties are secured by him, and he serves as our head of security. So then if you move on to, to page 11, we kind of go over a little bit more about the specific project that we're proposing here in Lemoore. So we have purchased 338 West D Street, which is the former Bank of America in downtown Lemoore. So I put a little diagram together so you kind of understand the customer flow. We have a large parking lot that's adjacent to Raina's Restaurant, which is actually part of the Bank of America property. Customers would park there, walk across, and enter through the rear of the building, and that's the only entrance into the building. They would shop, go in and either get express service or one-on-one bud tender service, where they would get education one-on-one and be able to build a relationship and have someone guide them through the process of what kind of product they're looking for and might help their ailment. And then when they exit, they're exiting directly on to the main street there, onto West D Street. So we're, we expect, and we actually see in Grover Beach, between 500 and 700 people a day through our dispensary, and we expect the similar amount of people here in Lemoore. That's 500 to 700 people exiting directly onto D Street, where they'll be able to hopefully patron other businesses. Something we're going to do to ensure that actually happens is every new customer that comes through the door will get a new patient handbook. That new patient handbook will talk about education, about different types of cannabis, the delivery methods, how to start slow and all that. But we'll also promote local businesses in the downtown core free of charge. Then on the following page, you'll see kind of a sample floor layout. Our layouts are going to look very similar to what you saw here on the boards, and I, we have a picture of our San Luis store as well. And so beautiful, high-end, a lot of people kind of describe it as a high-end jewelry store. And even though it has a high-end look, we have pricing for everyone. So we have things from all different segments of the market. So the proposed operation basically is when you come in as a customer, you check in at, you know, somebody verifies your ID in a, in a reception area, you choose express service or one-on-one service. So express service, you can order on your phone ahead of time, order on the website ahead of time, your order will be ready for pickup right away, so that you don't have to wait for that one-on-one service. If you actually need to be educated, or you're not sure what you want, you want to try something different, you're able to go with one-on-one service, which is what most of our customers do. And so that, you're paired with a one-on-one bud tender that guides you through the experience. We also will have interactive touch, touchscreens in the store, so if somebody goes in for express service but hadn't ordered ahead of time, they'll be able to place their order there and also do some self-education. So some of the things that we're offering are a full-time community outreach manager at the company that basically works with every business owner and resident in the area. They hold neighborhood meetings quarterly to make sure we're addressing everything proactively. We have a very strong history of communication with city staff, police departments, fire departments, and we implement what's called a industry self-regulatory program, where we partner with the other people who win the dispensary permits in every city where we operate. And we come up with a program that addresses issues proactively. So for example, some of the issues where, that come up in bars, bars have done this in the past, if you're banned from one bar because you're causing a problem, you're banned from the mall. And so that's the kind of program we want to implement here in Lemoore as well, in working with the other partner who wins. So basically, we've also offered in our development agreement, a $200,000 one-time payment to the city for city improvements and to offset impacts of the dispensary. In addition, we have a long history of giving back to the community. You can see it laid out on page 17. But to set a base commitment, we're offering $24,000 per year or $2,000 per month to community programs in addition to that one-time payment. So just for an example, every year, we hold a turkey drive where we give 400 free turkeys to families in need. We hold toy drives, you can actually see a photo of Helios on our local NBC affiliate, giving away $15,000 worth of toys to local families. And we've given many donations to preserve open space, to hire counselors for sexual assault counseling, and many, many more. We're also committing to a local hire preference in the dispensary, so all the workers, we hope, will be local. So anyone that lives in the city of Lemoore gets preference.
Excuse me.
Yes.
I'm going to give you two more minutes.
Okay, wrap up. And local contractors as well. So I want to talk about economics, which is actually one of the biggest and most important things here tonight. A cautionary tale, in Grover Beach, they issued four licenses, only two people opened. And it's because it takes a tremendous amount of capital and a tremendous amount of experience to pull off a dispensary in this very heavily compliance-based market. Okay, so we've done this successfully. You can see on our sales chart, that's our weekly sales chart, exponential growth completely, you know, every single week we're hitting records. We have a proven record. So right now, we're grossing about 1.5 to 1.6 million dollars a month. And in sales revenue, our sales tax revenue and other tax revenue to the city of Grover Beach is equating to over $1 million per year just from our retail operation, not any of our distribution or any of the other ancillary uses. So again, you'll also see, in addition to that, that we're well-capitalized and that we can pull off this project. It costs a lot of money to build a dispensary and a lot of money to continue to operate one, and you need someone who's done it before and done it before successfully, and we're that team. We also have a thorough security proposal included in your packet that's prepared by the security team I spoke about earlier, that addresses all kinds of things, including adding cameras to the park next door to the proposed dispensary. We believe that our presence there will improve the safety of the downtown and improve the park, because we're having so much foot traffic through there, a roaming security guard, and direct live feed security cameras to the police department directly on that park and all within the dispensary and all around it. That's going to deter anyone from wanting to do anything, you know, unlawful in that park or in the area. So with that, the proposal is very well thought out and laid out in the packet in front of you, and if there's additional questions, we're happy to take that. Thank you.
I was wondering, how many employees do you foresee being employed in your, in the Lemoore dispensary?
So initially, we are going to start off with 15, but we anticipate that's going to grow to 20 and larger. I believe that our current store in Grover, we're approaching 30 at this point.
Um, yeah, I wanted to say, good job, guys. I mean, this, this thing gave us a lot of information. I did have a question, Jake, what was the one that you were holding up? There was, there was something, yeah, that one. It was in here, wasn't it?
Yes, that is in there.
Yeah, okay, obviously, the, the obvious, I can't, I couldn't see it in this one.
Page 19.
What, what, what is the bottom scale?
So this is a weekly sales graph. So on the left-hand side, you're going to see when we opened. And it was medical only at that time, so those two little small bars.
I think that just answered my own question.
Okay. Yep. And so what I want to point on though, so this brings up a good point. So we were medical only in those, those first two weeks, and then when we went recreational, we saw a big bump and we're can see continued growth. But we're actually experiencing our highest week of sales ever in the last week, or the But we're actually experiencing our highest week of sales ever in the last week or the week before. And that the percentage of medical sales is actually higher than when we were medical only. Because people, back when it was medical only, you know, they still got cards for recreational purposes, right?
Yeah.
But we see our average customer is 55. Our medical products are the highest grossing products. It's non-psychoactive topical bomb, that's our best seller. We have tons of people coming in there with walkers and from community or from retirement communities. And so we're actually, that's the bread and butter of our business is that demographic, so.
I had one more question, sorry, now let you go, Nick. So I can't remember which one of you said it, you won some award for-
That's correct.
In Slow, what was the award?
So our local publication, The New Times, issues best of Slow County and all the different businesses in the town. We won best dispensary in the county.
So how many dispensaries is there in the county?
So there are two retail dispensaries and then there are a bunch of delivery services which are considered-
So you guys were up against the delivery services also?
Yes, and so in addition to that though, the more important one that we feel is that we won best new business of 2018 and that's to compete with all businesses across all industries. And so it really speaks volume of the community partnerships and the relationships that we formed that we were able to win best new business of the county.
I know, I'm good. Thank you, guys.
I do have one more question. He just spoke of deliveries. Are you planning on having a delivery aspect to the dispensary as well?
Yes, so retail licenses at the state do permit deliveries if permitted by the city. So if the city permits it, we would like to participate.
Okay.
I have one quick question, if I may, as I asked everybody and you did talk about security, which I appreciate, that's very important. The safety, product safety, can you elaborate a little bit on that of, you know, because those are two of the concerns that I've-
Absolutely.
Security and product safety. And if, you know, on your security policy and plan, you know, if there's anything that sticks out in your mind that you would like to elaborate, if you would please.
Absolutely. So let's start with product safety. So all products sold in the dispensary has to come from a legally permitted distribution company. And that means that all the products have gone through the three phases of testing mandated by state law, right? So you know you're getting exactly what's stated on the label and you know that there's no pesticides, no heavy metals, none of that, right? So that ensures the safety of the product. We take it a step further because then we worry about, okay, what's going to happen when the product gets out of the store? So not required under state law right now is that you don't necessarily have to have it in a childproof bag, right, an opaque childproof bag. So we're doing that right now, even though that law, that requirement doesn't yet kick in. And so that just shows that we're proactive and that we, you know, think about these things ahead of time. So everything leaves in an opaque childproof bag that you can barely even get into as an adult, right? You have to do this kind of maneuver that sometimes we have our customers come back, how do I open this thing, right? It's crazy. So we're, that's incredibly important to us. So we're making sure everything's legally compliant. We're taking all the additional steps that are necessary to ensure the product is secure. With regards to the actual security plan, on page 21, you'll see kind of the overview of the plan. But then the detailed plan developed by the security company is in the appendix or in the exhibits, which you'll see titled "Security Plan." That's extremely thorough and goes into a lot of stuff there. But a couple of highlights are the interior and exterior footage is 100% coverage of everything on the interior and exterior. Video cameras that have a direct live feed to the police department and that's in a high resolution and is 90 days backup footage minimum, right? And we actually have longer than that, but that's what the minimum that we need. There are panic buttons throughout the dispensary. So all the bud tenders have like a little watch-looking thing that if there was ever an issue, they can click it and it discreetly contacts the authorities. We have a licensed roaming security guard that's present at all times. And then entry to the retail facility is obviously restricted with a receptionist that has to buzz you in after they verify your ID through double-entry doors. What we do to go above and beyond the state and local requirements, because that's what we always try to strive for, is a secure delivery bay. And so we actually see the most vulnerable part of the business is in the deliveries. So, and people overlook that because a secure delivery bay is not required under state law. So if you look at all the crimes that have occurred around cannabis, it's usually around a distribution vehicle driving around that has lots of cash and lots of valuable product in it. It gets robbed on the street somewhere, right? And so what we do is we make sure when vendors are being delivered, it's in a secured area with locking gates or, you know, roll-up door that get completely closed and secured before any cash or product is exchanged, right? Then on the floor plan, which you might notice, that's actually drawn out on the floor plan on page 12, you'll notice there's an outdoor secure delivery alley or walkway that goes from the secure delivery alley all the way down into a secured area of the dispensary where we intake the deliveries and put them directly into the secure vault. This is an old bank, so the vault is very secure. You can bet on that. So the entire time the delivery is being made, it's not going to come into contact with any customer or anyone that's not authorized, right? It's completely behind the scenes and it's, you know, we take this extremely seriously, so. So that's definitely a highlight as well. In addition to that, obviously the building is equipped with alarm systems, motion detectors, glass break detectors, the glass we use is bullet resistant. The product at night is stored in a 2-hour fire-rated steel reinforced vault or secured on the floor in a similar manner. And then all employees have cannabis work permits. We have a backup generator in case power goes out. We can still operate completely compliantly and, you know, all the rest. But there's a very detailed proposal in there with all this and more.
Thank you. Anyone else? Where did you guys get your rankings from?
What's that?
Your rankings?
Which rankings are you referring to?
You guys got, you ranked number one.
Yes, so we ranked number one in the process in Grover Beach, San Luis Obispo and-
Who ranked you guys?
The city council and the city staff who-
Oh, the city council, city, okay.
So very competitive process in San Luis Obispo, you know, it's a fairly sizable city. Very competitive in Morro Bay as well, where we were up against huge companies that operate, you know, many, many dispensaries. And we were able to beat those, all those people out because of our community relationships and our community programs.
Now you said, how many you guys went against? How many dispensaries that you guys went against on this ranking?
So, yeah, in Morro Bay, I think there were seven or eight applicants. In Grover Beach, I don't recall, but it was about that, about 13. And then in San Luis Obispo, I think it was nine, but don't quote me on that. But it was in that range.
Okay, and where did you get your numbers from, from 500 to 700? Will be coming in and out, where'd you get them numbers from?
Correct, those are actual numbers. So we have a system where, a computer system where you come in and your license gets scanned on the back and you go into our system to be checked in, right? And that verifies that you're 21 years of age.
That would be about the same equivalent-
We pick that out of the population from the proximity of the area. That's how many people we think we'll see based off of the population.
What's the population where you guys are at?
It's about 12, 13,000 people.
But in the surrounding county and the surrounding 25 mile radius-
Okay, thank you.
It's almost identical to LAMOR.
Okay, yes, thank you.
And all that information is tracked in our system so we can give you that actual real data. So it's based on real data, not just projections.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Good job.
Oh, Valley Pier is up next.
Howdy, sir.
All right, my man.
If I could plug my computer in, that'd be great. I don't have a thumb drive.
Can you give one, do you have an extra one to give to you?
Oh, yeah, definitely, sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, guys. Thanks for having us. My name is Wes Harden and I am part of the retail management team for Valley Pier. In Valley Pier, we are the first and largest cannabis dispensary in the central valley. So I just want to kind of take you guys through a snapshot of what we are at Valley Pier, who we think we are, who we're grooming ourselves to be and where we're going in the future. And we really hope that that includes LAMOR as part of the stepping stone that we're taking. So what we do at Valley Pier is we create a one-of-a-kind customer experience. Being that we were the first in the valley to come along through Wood Lake, we learned a lot. We learned a lot about what we need to do from a valley perspective to make these kind of businesses work. We're all local people, we understand local concerns, we understand where the municipalities want these things to go and we try and spend a bulk of our time understanding what makes you guys comfortable, what makes law enforcement comfortable and what makes our customers comfortable. So how we do that is we pride ourselves on being ethically top-notch businessmen. We're operators in the industry, we have a proven track record, we have great relationships in every town that we are lucky enough to exist in. And I should say coexist because this really is a partnership and this really is something that shouldn't be taken lightly from your perspective, law enforcement's perspective or our perspective. Because in the end, the goal is to get quality, safe access to customers. We want to play a key role in the betterment of the communities that we exist in. So we do that by being on-call 24/7 for you guys. If there's ever questions, concerns, requests, we always make those happen. With Wood Lake, we have spent a lot of time with our city because it was a symbiotic relationship with us and them. They were the first city to get it through and we were the first business to get a license. And so because of forging that fire together, we've all learned a lot. We've learned a lot about Wood Lake and we've helped that city become a much better city than it was when the cannabis businesses were allowed to operate. What we've done in Wood Lake is create infrastructure, create commerce. We have one of the largest indoor cultivation facilities in the state of California and it is not only large, but it's technically advanced to the likes which you have never seen. And if you haven't been out there, I recommend you guys come out and give it a look because it is something special. We're effectively stewards of our industry, right? I'm a businessman standing up here trying to sell the Valley Pier product to you guys. And we do that with responsibility. As a lover of cannabis and as a veteran, I've seen what cannabis can do in the lives of my comrades and in the lives of people every single day. In Wood Lake, we're averaging about 700 people a day, which is remarkable commerce for a town of that size. So what we know about LAMOR is that we're already serving your community since day one. Your customers are my customers. There's no difference between them. The idea is to get us closer to the customer that we need to make sure that they don't have to make that 50-mile trek, right? So we want to make sure that we're thriving in your city. We want to make sure that we are going to be an effective part of cannabis for the future. Because not only are we stewards of cannabis, but now you're putting regulations forth that make you stewards of cannabis as well. So we want to make sure that we're, we can be here to work hand-in-hand because we've done it before in the valley. So a little snapshot of who we are, we've been called the pot pioneers. We are the first. There was nobody before us and we've been the only ones on the block for going on a year and a few months now. And it's been great. It's been really great. So just to take you through our team very quickly, like I said, my name's Wes Harden. I'm a veteran of the US Air Force. I've been in retail cannabis sales for going on 10 years now. Before I went to Valley Pier, I ran the other largest medical cannabis dispensary until Valley Pier came along and then we became the largest, which I pride myself on. I'm one of the lead voices in the valley as far as cannabis is concerned. I've sat on many boards, many action committees. I truly believe that members of our team have ushered cannabis into the valley on a lot of our hard work. Tony Cottle, who is here as well, he is my partner in crime. He is, I shouldn't, I guess I shouldn't say that. He is my partner in former crime. Now legal activity. And Tony has a lot of experience. Me and him share the same values of building these dispensaries. Our company is a smaller, we're a bigger company with a lot of, a lot of resources behind us, but we maintain a small-company mentality. We keep the core members of our, of our company together and we can move regulation and we move ourselves through the valley that way. So Tony has been here for a long time and he shares a lot of the same experiences I do. TJ Hammond, who's our director of cultivation, and I'll touch on it briefly. Green Smart Farmer, which I mentioned, is our 75,000-square-foot cultivation facility located in Wood Lake, three tiers high, so 75,000 square feet. We've effectively tripled that. And we do that because we think that cannabis and like I was talking about stewardship, that also relates to agriculture in a big way. TJ is an ag guy. TJ is a PCA, so he worked in ag before he came with us. And what we're doing with Green Smart Farmer is effectively revolutionizing agriculture. We're trying to create a low-impact agricultural method where we can create cannabis for the best economic value with the least amount of footprint possible. So I won't stay on that for too long because I know that's not what we're talking about, but it does relate to Valley Pier in the way that our cultivation allows us to be very competitive in the market, which is another thing that really, we hope, puts us on the top of your list, is that we can produce cannabis at a lower price because of our size, which makes us a very viable entrepreneurial in the industry of LAMOR. We can bring cannabis at a lower price than we believe anybody in the market. And that's really what we're trying to do. The idea is get it to the consumer at an affordable price. And then Kevin Bernacki, who is our operations manager, he's the guy that pretty much runs all aspects of Valley Pier, Green Smart Farmer, our distribution and our manufacturing. Kev is a figurehead in the cannabis industry. He was integral in the Las Vegas cannabis industry growth. He brought this tiered farming to Las Vegas on a smaller scale than what we have here in California. But Kev has done an amazing job. He's been featured in multiple cannabis industry magazines. He's our YouTube star on the team. So we don't have Lorenzo Neal, but we got Kev. So a little bit about why we think you should choose us. We think that Valley Pier offers a ton to the communities that we exist in. We will work tirelessly to make sure that you guys are comfortable and know what's going on. That starts with security, that starts with compliance, that starts with ethics. Those are the things that this industry has been built on and we really want to make sure that you guys know how serious we are about that. And we would love to invite anybody who hasn't been to our Wood Lake location to come see it. It's our second location. We also have a Santa Cruz location and soon to be a Farmersville location as well. So we will have three active dispensaries within two months, I'd say. We really pride ourselves on community benefits and community improvement programs. And the way we do that is we make sure that we work with the city council, the law enforcement and the community to tailor-fit programs that work for whatever city. What's good for Wood Lake might not be great for LAMOR. So for us to say we're just going to carry that same benefit package to you guys, isn't necessarily the best philosophy because you guys might need a benefit package that has different elements to it. So what we do is we make sure that we're always working hand-in-hand with the council, with city government to make sure you guys are getting exactly what you need. Because that's what this is all about. Some examples of what we have done in Wood Lake is toy drives every year. We made sure last year that every child in the city of Wood Lake got a gift. We make sure that they all have backpacks. We make sure that the college seniors or the high school seniors that have performed well academically get scholarships that they can get to college. We make sure that any kind of community improvement that is needed, we're there. We've donated police cars, police dogs. We work with law enforcement. We realize that that is the backbone. They're a trusted agency in these cities. So we want to make sure that law enforcement knows that we're here for anything that they might need. So I believe in LAMOR, we are definitely planning on, we really want to be in the Old Train Depot. We think that that's a great location for dispensary. It's a beautiful building and with our help, I think we can make it really awesome because I know there's some disrepair. So we are willing to repair the fire damage. We're willing to remodel the whole building, which we think will be about 300,000. And in the end, that's your building because we would be leasing it from you. So that is a benefit that we could extend immediately along with the downtown revitalization program that we would work closely with you guys on to make sure that you guys get what you need. Because these businesses do create a lot of revenue. you need because these businesses do create a lot of revenue. They do bring a lot of money, and we want to make sure that you, as a city, are getting exactly what you need out of us as a business. Local hiring preference, we'd make sure we hired 80% of our staff from the Lamois area. Really, we need our top executive management team to be in there as well, but we would bring all the staff from Lamois because that's what we want to do. We want to make sure. And from a business perspective, there's no reason why you wouldn't do that. You want people in the community working with you, spreading the word about what we're doing. So on the last page of our, or the second-to-last, I'm sorry, the last page of the pamphlet, we kind of put in a snapshot, yes?
I'll give you two minutes.
Sure. So we kind of put in a snapshot of what Valley Pure has done since the day we opened the doors in Woodlake. And like the guys that presented before, we really, their numbers weren't crazy off. We think that 500 to 700 people a day is definitely very doable and real. And so in Woodlake, we've managed to do almost $14 million in sales. We've got a patient list of active, I'd say about 75,000. We've completed nearly 200,000 transactions. And what that does for the community is those transactions, they come along with other people that aren't necessarily visiting the dispensary. We feel like every group that comes in has one or two that don't come in, but they patronize the city. They go get food at the cafe. They go buy, go to the boutiques or the shops, which we've seen a ton open up in the years since we've been there. I think at first, when we came, there was a lot of apprehension on the local business leaders, but I think seeing what we've done and how we've improved the community, how we've improved Main Street, it's really been a difference-maker for them. So we really appreciate what you guys have been doing on this legislation. We look forward to hopefully being partners with you in the future, and I can definitely answer any questions if you guys have any.
Thank you.
You mentioned your proposals at the Train Depot.
Yeah.
Which is very, very close to our local skate park.
Right.
And we have a little water park.
Right. So what we would definitely make happen in that circumstances, we would be willing to relocate that skate park to a, if it was a problem, we would relocate the skate park. We would build it, in our minds, better and hopefully find a suitable place for it to be. So we could make sure that that all happened if that became a problem. We could relocate all that.
And since I've asked several others, how many employees, you said 80%, again, local, how many employees do you envision at your dispensary?
Yeah, I imagine we'd open up the doors with 12 to 16 employees straight from Lamois, and that number would increase as revenue increased, obviously. But yeah, we think 12 to 16 would be a safe number to open up.
And who would be the chief operator or whatever?
As far as who would be the person that you would talk to?
Yeah.
It would either be me or Tony. We are the retail-
Your partner in crime over there?
Yeah, former crime.
Did you write that joke before you came here, or did that just happen on the fly?
At the top, and I'm smart. But yeah, so me and Tony are the retail executive management team, as it were. So you would have a direct line to one or both of us at all times.
Question I asked everybody else, product, customer, safety, security. I know you mentioned about it in the pamphlet, but if you could elaborate on it a little bit, please?
Yeah, so, so, security is our, we take more pride in our security than maybe anything. We really make sure that people know that they're coming into a safe environment because that's the key to this whole thing. Our demographic is 35 to 60, and those people need to feel comfortable because they might be a first-time cannabis user. They might be experimentally using it. So with security, always 100% coverage. We make sure that we work with local law enforcement to make sure that they're comfortable with our security plan. In Woodlake, we have a 24/7 live feed to the police department all the time. We help the police department with training. We make sure that they have all the resources that they need from us and likewise, because obviously this is an industry where there are security concerns. So we kind of go above and beyond. As far as product safety, we make sure that we are abiding by state law and all labeling and packaging requirements all the time. It's, 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 there's no, there's no two ways around it. In our SOP binder, which I believe you'll get turned in with the business plan, we run through our whole product security and our whole product safety guideline program. We make sure that we have all of our personnel super-trained. We take them through, before a staff member can come onboard and actually be operational in a dispensary, they go through a two-week training program, and then they go through another two weeks of OJT when they're with a senior staff member that can teach them what they need to know. And our receiving department also super-trained on what needs to be looked for. Being that we are vertically integrated with our own cultivation and distribution and manufacturing, we can, we can kind of control our product safety from the plant, which is really nice for us when you're doing the kind of volume that we are. It's, it makes it easier because we can make sure that all this stuff is compliant day one, so.
So you also said that you guys deliver from Woodlake to Lamois, correct?
Yeah, so, so, so we deliver, and not only delivery, they're coming to us already. I mean, I wish I could pull the statistics on how many people-
Oh, no. What I was going to ask is that if you guys deliver from there to here, when you guys, if you guys open here, are you guys going to do deliveries out of the Lamois place as well?
If the city and the regulations allow that to happen, for sure. We're a player in any realm that we could be. Anything else, guys?
Yeah, I have a quick question. After reading through the agenda packet, there's two things in there with you guys, and one of them states that you're going to give 5% of your grocery receipts, and another one says 4%. Is that two separate things where it's going to be a total of 9% of sales on page-
Which document are you talking about?
Well, there's one on a lease and there's one-
Counsel, I think that the DA is just a draft, and so there were numbers that were in there that have been changed. I believe Valley Pure is offering 5%.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, 5% of groceries.
Okay.
Anything else, guys? Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, guys.
Councilman Scotty, I know you asked about the Train Depot, but then you got Ranus. They got one going in right there, and you can shoot a marble right there from Ranus to where you guys are. You guys are farther off than where they want to put one by Ranus. So I was wondering, the one by Ranus, if you know what I'm talking about, the building that Corcia has?
Yes.
Is, ain't that one?
So, so we have multiple buildings in that area. There's one, two, three, there's four buildings all within 400 feet of each other that are in play tonight. Yes.
Okay. And first, were you guys in Goshen?
I was in charge of Goshen for a long time, but as far as a recreational cannabis facility, we were the first ones in the Central Valley.
In Goshen?
No, in Woodlake. Goshen is medical.
Okay. No, it's not just medical.
Well, they don't have a recreational regulation in Tulare County, so Goshen is considered a medical-only dispensary.
Okay, you got Goshen. I've seen what Goshen, I went through, did the walkthrough through Goshen, and then at the same time Tulare, because the city council in Tulare, they have one there as well.
Right.
Do you guys have any affiliation with them?
No.
And they've been around, I'm just saying, they've been around for like five, six years.
Right. So basically, what we did at Valley Pure is, is we went around and we found the best talented people that were operating here in the valley, and we pulled them in, and we created what would be the first recreational dispensary, so where anybody over 21 could go in.
I'm just saying, I differ with you with that because I've seen different when I was there. And so I'm just saying, let me go to something else. What year did you guys get affiliated with Lamois?
What year did we become affiliated with Lamois? I believe we've, I mean, I-
No, answer the question. You could talk to me.
I believe we had our first tour from Lamois maybe eight months ago, nine months ago, I'm assuming. I mean, we toured a lot of city councils, but I don't think it's been a long time.
Yeah, it hasn't. I think that was good.
Good?
I answered the question.
Okay. We're good to go, guys? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Walsana.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, thank you for giving us this opportunity to discuss with you why we think at Walsana Partners that we are a suitable partner for the city of Lamois to partner with regard to a dispensary. Let me introduce myself. First of all, my name is David Mock. I am from Fresno. I am an attorney that has been in the cannabis business for the last six years and consulting with clients in cannabis for about the last 10. My partner, Jay Kelly, is also a licensed attorney in the state of California. He left our firm a couple of years ago to oversee all of our cannabis operations, and he's been doing so since then. And our other partner, Matt Billingsley, who is a Lamois native and who we've been talking with about this project for some years. First of all, you've got a difficult decision ahead of you coming up with regard to what to do with regard to a dispensary. And I think there are a couple of things that set us apart from the other candidates who have given you great presentations tonight. The location is, as we just pointed out in the last presentation, you've got four of the potential candidates for two licenses within 400 feet of each other. And that is going to create, I think, for downtown, a dysfunction. You're not chasing, you're all chasing the same customers, and that's going to put, I think, the city in a predicament. The project that we're proposing is out in the industrial park near 198 and 41 on Iona. We're an area out there that's zoned as light industrial. We're in a position where we have been in our history in the cannabis business. We've been cultivating in San Luis Obispo, just like NHC. We've been out there for the last four years cultivating on a 40-acre farm. We are also, not part of this presentation, but part of our other development agreement would be for cultivation out there as well on that property and venture place, as well as the parcel of 80 acres just south across from the Chevron. So we would be vertically integrated in regards to the product being grown and then sold within 400 yards of where it's being grown at. And I think that's very important, as we've discussed earlier tonight with some of the other presenters, the control of the product that you're selling. You know, it becomes, this is mainstream now. This has become part of our society. And part of it, a responsible cannabis business operator, is to provide that product in a safe, reliable environment. You want to make sure when they come to your facility that they're safe. You want to make sure when they use the product, they know what they're using, and they're educated in a way to use it safely. For the past five years, Jay and I have ran a delivery service in San Luis Obispo called Cannabest. It's not a storefront. It is a delivery service where we service hundreds of clients every week. We don't have the same volume as you would with regards to a walk-in facility because you're driving around to get to folks, but we service hundreds, if not thousands, of people throughout the week. As part of that, when we began in the medicinal, not the adult use, but in the medicinal area, which was five years ago, it depends on that patient education, where you're spending time in patients' homes, where our salespeople are educating them on what is better for them. Is it a THC product that has a psychotropic effect, or is it a CBD product that has some other natural healing that doesn't give you the head change? Or is it a combination of the two? Is it a topical you need versus something to ingest versus something to inhale, to vape? There are so many different ways to educate the consumer, and that is an important part of this. In addition to all this, community is an important part, and we're going to have Mr. Billingsley talk about what our plan is for the involvement with the community here. We know that the Billingsley family has been an integral part of Lamois for decades, and that intends to be continued if we're fortunate enough to be awarded that license. Jay is going to talk here in a moment about the methods that we use for our, at the dispensary right now for the delivery service, but we also manufacture most of our products with regard to tinctures, which are the drops under the tongue, the topicals, as well as all the flower and the different pre-rolls that you can get as well. All those are products that we manufacture, that we have tested as you're required to do through the state, and that we're able to provide those to the consumer with education about what they're getting. With regard to security, Councilman Brown, we will adhere, as everyone's talked about, their security plans are top of the line, and we're going to be no different. In addition to us, as the partners, we have a, who couldn't be here tonight, he's a teacher at College of the Sequoias, teaches art, but Jude Resendez is a veteran who served in both Iraq and Afghanistan, and he is a member of our team that helps with the security as well as with the education of the veterans to help them get the access to the medicine as well as to start opening up those doors with a lot of the veteran groups. So now I'd like to turn it over to Jay to discuss with you some of our production facility and how we're able to do with the dispensary over there.
Good evening, Council. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to present this information. Like they've said, we've been operating over at the coast for several years, and I got into this business very organically. My brother, Afghan-Iraq veteran, double amputee, when he came home, he had a lot of difficulty adjusting to normal life back at home. That's how I got involved in this. That's how my brother got involved in this. He's also an owner of our business, and he's going to be here for the meeting, council meeting later. He's finishing teaching a class at COS right now. But that's been our primary focus because that's how we got into this, is veteran-focused, and that's what we've continued to do at the coast. That's our primary customer base. That's who we've developed all of our tinctures, the topicals. We grow certain strains that have benefits that our veterans have told us work for them. Jude is involved in a veteran support group through the VA over in Fresno. He's also involved in an amputee support group, veterans and non-veterans. We also talk to those folks about what works for them and what doesn't. And we've developed product lines across the spectrum of cannabis delivery, all the way from smoking it, vaping it, topicals, you name it, all with an eye on veterans coming home with PTSD, with severe injuries that need severe pain relief, they need sleep relief, and then they just need general help functioning with PTSD in their daily lives. That's been our primary focus in product development. That was the start. We focused all of our development efforts, how we grow our cannabis, the processes that we use, the pest management protocols that we use, the fertilization programs that we use. All of that is to not impact the ultimate medicinal value of this product. It is to grow the product as pure as possible to its natural state so that all of those medicinal cannabinoids, all of those compounds that have medicinal value are not compromised in the growing, harvesting, drying, curing processes. We've got SOPs for every single day that a plant is in our care, from the time the seed is popped or from the time the clone is cut, every day of its life until that plant is harvested, we have SOPs of what our growers do and what our plant technicians do every day of that plant's life, all the way through harvest, drying, and curing, again to safeguard the medicinal value. And that's, that's what we're intending to focus on here in Lamois on the cultivation side, but also on the storefront, the dispensary side as well, is serving veterans. That's our primary customer base over there. We've always focused on the medicinal side. Since legalization of adult use, there's some crossover. You know, we don't make any bones about it. There's crossover there. Our focus is on the medicinal side, and if people use those products, if they work for them on the adult-use side, so be it. It's just not our focus. It's not what we develop products for, what we're thinking about in development. Our time is limited. We're certainly an open book. Like I said, or like they've said, we're both attorneys, residents of Fresno. Matt is a Lamois native. He's going to speak to the community benefit, but any questions now or after, feel free. We're an open book. We live here. We work here. Please, don't hesitate. Don't be shy. I know you won't.
Good evening. A few things that we've talked about as a group. Again, I'm from Lamois, 18 years, lived here, born and raised. My family's been doing business and contributing to the community for over 70 years with sponsorships, any, you know, anything that the community would need. This morning, or this afternoon on my way in, I drove by the Lamois Little League, and a few of the constituents that are here might have seen me back when I was 13, 14. I would mow the Little League yard, and that was things that I did with the community, for the community. And we don't plan to stop now. We want to give back to the Little League, to the senior citizen building that, that might need some repairs or anything that you guys had in mind as far as repairs. You know, the, the 198 area is in, in need of development as well. And we would be covering, we'd be killing two birds, one stone with this, with that option. So again, we're here to, to, to grow the community of LaMour. Tax dollars are, and you know, ultimately what everybody's looking for, I believe. And you got 50,000 people crossing over 41 and 198 that you don't want to miss, you know, stopping through LaMour. So, thank you.
Thanks very much. You guys have heard a lot tonight. If you have questions, we're happy to answer them, but I know you've heard a ton tonight.
So Wellsona, do you guys have other dispensaries?
We have the one, we have the one delivery operation in San Luis Obispo and that, but we do not have a storefront delivery operation right now.
And you already kind of, you did talk about the, the topic that I've been asking the questions on is safety and security policies. And you did touch on product safety.
Right.
So, I'm good.
Thank you. And security is something that's definitely to be important in a working relationship with the local municipality. At our farm in Paso Robles in San Luis Obispo County, the sheriff routinely comes out there to have education with some of their training officers to learn about what looks right and what looks wrong on a cannabis farm.
You guys said you were, you were doing more, or hope to do more than a dispensary, you want to manufacture. And, and I didn't catch the, the total acre, you said there's a couple of different parcels that you guys are thinking about doing.
Sure, there's about eight acres, which is, I think classified as venture place. And then there's the, there's an 80 acre parcel that is south of there, sit right across the street from the Chevron. And that we have got a, we have a letter of intent with a lease to be executed with the landlord for 20 acres there for cultivation, manufacturing. And then we've also got the right of first refusal on the remaining 60 acres out there. And that would be what's considered light depth greenhouse cultivation.
Okay. And along with that, obviously with the cultivation, you're going to have to have more employees. What do you guys envision as far as employees and, and are you guys looking to hire people from, from the community?
Absolutely looking to hire people from the community. With the dispensary, everyone's been correct on their estimates, it's about 15 to 20 to 25 folks for dispensary. With regards to the cultivation operation, it could be upwards of, at full build out, easily 100 folks.
And do you have, you know, a roundabout on wages, you guys said you had 40 acres over in the, in the greater slow area. Do you guys have roundabout on wages on those particular, obviously you're going to have entry level and you're going to have a little bit more in-depth knowledgeable, but do you have an entry level type of a pay scale?
Yeah, the entry level pay scale that we've been working with over there is folks are coming in for the, for the, the lower end of it, between 15 and 17, 15 an hour and they work all the way up. We've got some of our employees that are as much as 25, 30 bucks an hour. So it kind of depends on where they fall and their responsibilities that they've got.
Thank you.
So I, I have one last question.
Sure.
So where's you guys' delivery site from?
Right now, it's, it's, it's located over in Paso Robles at 27 Wellsona.
So to have that, do you guys have to have a license to do that or?
We do. Go ahead.
Yeah, so we have multiple licenses in the state. We have a micro business license located in Oakland. That's where all, that's where the hub of all of our delivery is out of, is out of that licensed facility in Oakland. We've historically focused our delivery efforts on the central coast because that's where we've been cultivating for years. And we actually initially chose that location because we're from Fresno, it was the closest legal location to do this. And we're attorneys, we're, you know, upstanding citizens, we have children, that's why we chose that location.
I guess my question is more geared towards the fact that if, so a dispensary license, is that the same as a, it's a different license?
Correct. A dispensary license allows delivery from that licensed dispensary location. There are also non-storefront delivery licenses, excuse me, there are also micro business licenses that allow multiple business activities from that licensed premises, including the delivery.
Gotcha, thank you.
You're welcome.
What I heard in two of you, two of the dispensaries what captivated my attention, my sole purpose was health. With the PTSD and then somebody else with health issues. And I, I think that's the number one sole purpose, what I'm looking at for anything and that's very important. Now your rankings, how are you guys doing with rankings? Did you guys win any awards or anything like that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so the past two years, the San Luis Obispo Cannabis Cup, we won first place in 2017. We won first place for cannabis, we won second place for topical that year. 2018, we won first place for indoor cannabis, we won second place for light depth cannabis, we won first place for outdoor cannabis. And then again, we repeated, we actually won for topical that year as well.
That's what I was wanting to hear.
Yes, sir.
Keep up the good work.
Yes, sir.
Thank you guys. All right, Billingsley.
Okay. Has Canon Topia showed up? Anybody from Canon Topia in the audience? Okay, we'll scratch them and then we'll go to Kings County Cannabis. No, I'll go to that. Fox and Hound's not here. Yeah. Also is, is Fox and Hound in the audience? Or Fox and Goose, sorry.
Oh.
Thank you. Okay. Right after these guys, you'll be up.
Awesome, thank you guys so much for your time today. What we really want to emphasize, KC3 is actually a new company, recently formed, but with experience driven behind myself. I've been fully integrated licensed in Clark County, Nevada. I've held several distinguished awards in the space. So moving forward with the new company, we brought on Telson Securities because I think a big part of this is understanding that you have to have the financial capabilities in order to move it forward. Is that better?
Yeah. There you go.
So what we really want to focus and emphasize on today, besides just dispensaries, is a fully integrated model. We want to achieve large scale cultivation as well as manufacturing, a visiting center to help educate and inform on how the process is done from a true seed to sale integration. That seed to sale integration includes a manufacturing facility, a very large sustainable greenhouse model so that we can incur and create cannabinoid profiles at a very, very large scale that is easy and can reflect across the distribution center across California. So we want to work and grow with the city of LaMour as we move forward with this integrated model. With having manufacturing included, so that way any product that is on our shelf, that is represented in our dispensary has truly been manufactured through our SOPs all the way through. So we were presenting a full integrated model today and I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Telson and Andrew at Telson Securities. Give you a little bit about what we're going to do with the city and how we have an, a financial impact on the city moving forward. Thank you.
Evening. Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Okay, great. After listening to the other presentations, all of which were very good today, I think the one thing that differentiates us is the fact that we're going to do it all in Lenore. So we will generate tax dollars from cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, retail, delivery. These are the areas that we want to focus in. We're going to build a campus here on 180 acres in the industrial zone and we are going to begin construction of 500,000 square feet. And from there, we're going to take it up to 4 million over the next five years. We're going to be a major exporter, not only from the city of Lenore and the valley, but upon federal approval, we'll be able to export out of the state of California. We're also going to have a, a manufacturing facility here that basically will do everything from oil to edibles to other kinds of retail products. And obviously to the extent that we were granted a dispensary license, we would be selling retail as well. We're going to be developing our own brands and we're going to basically have a situation where we are a fully integrated seed to consumer company based here. And really, I'll answer security questions and all these other questions that people have, but I'll probably just be, be repeating the same things everybody else is saying because we all understand the importance of security, the consumer coordinating with law enforcement and all of those things because we're in a sensitive business still. We all know that. And we're in the infancy of this industry. So I was sort of looking at it from the standpoint, we're a little bit different than the other presentations here because we will be a significant employer in this city over the next three or five years. And we'll be a significant source of tax dollars because we will pay the, the annual fee for the cultivation, the distribution, the retail, the delivery, all that goes to the city. So we like this location in the state. We like the ability to be able to get relatively cost-effective land to do the things we need to do. And we believe that over time, we could be a major force in the California cannabis market headquartered here in LaMour. I'm not very long-winded.
Questions?
Yeah, well, hold on, I'm still going through the, your packet that you gave us. Do you have, do you have any other operational things here in California right now or?
In Southern California, yes, we do.
And what is that?
Well, we are cultivating 18 acres in Hemet in Riverside County. We are also one of the larger CBD hemp growers. Right now, we have a beta test going on in Kings County with 100 acres, that's going to go up to 1,600 acres next, next spring. And we're going to be having a, one of the first wet harvest techniques with one of his technologies. So we're all about scale. Because we think ultimately with the federalization of this particular product, we'll be able to export initially all over the state of California, but ultimately all over the United States. So we want to build, as we say, a campus, this is a euphemism, for a fully integrated system. But we would like to do that in a way that obviously we work together with the city, you're our partner. And obviously we're in a situation where if we could build this out over the next three or five years, I think it's a win-win for the city, obviously for us. And quite frankly, for the consumers, because we're going to have control over our product from the seed to the ingestion of that particular product.
I have a question if I may. Do you run any dispensaries currently? Do you operate any dispensaries?
At the current, at the current moment, no. I recently just sold my locations in Las Vegas to Bedman, which is a very recognizable force and industry, so.
Okay. Thank you. It sounds like you've done a lot of the other, I mean. Thank you. Cultivation, you've done quite a.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Thank you.
I haven't had an opportunity to go through the, the entire book, obviously I just received it. But in here, going through it really quickly, it's got two different dispensaries, is that two different models or?
Two different models.
Okay.
There's a, depending on the location, there's a basic model that we're looking at and let's say a deluxe model.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, and they're going to be different investments in those two models and they'll have different revenues.
Okay.
And what was the location you were looking at?
It's 180 acres southwest industrial zone. It's the last parcel in the industrial zone.
Yep, I think I'm familiar with it.
It's in cotton right now.
Yeah.
And one more thing, because you know, I, I, about jobs and, and you're saying, you know, you're talking 500,000 square feet, trying to get up to 4 million square feet. Obviously that's, should be a lot of employees. How many, how many employees are you thinking with the 500K?
Well, initially when we get the operations underway, under full contract, we'll have 75 employees in the immediate start for the 500,000 square feet, running the manufacturing dispensary and a visitor center. And five out of those 75 employees, five of them will be outside, coming in experts, helping with the labor and adjusting towards moving forward. But as it grows, it will continue to, to, to grow. And this facility needs to be built from the ground up, so we'll also be employing local contractors to be doing all the work here. Minus the security team that we'll be bringing in that has done all my locations in Clark County, Nevada, Illinois, as well as Orange County.
And just to confirm with this dispensary, you're also looking at delivery, right?
Of course, there'd be a delivery center in the site and we have the full capability of putting in Susan doors, which actually encompass both of the vehicles.
For just, I apologize, I stepped on you there.
Oh, no problem, no problem. I was just saying, we have a fully integrated model that actually incorporates Susan doors so that, that no one can run in and out of the facility. It also has a visitor center that actually people can come, explore and understand what we're doing. So they're sealed off from the actual areas that we're actually cultivating or actually operating our business. But they get to at least come in and see kind of the history of cannabis, what it takes, what it takes to actually get to the level of them actually consuming the product.
And approximately, just for the dispensary only, how many employees are you looking at just for the dispensary site only?
Yeah, 16 to 20 employees.
16 to 20, thank you.
Absolutely.
One, one more question.
And we're only a couple of miles from the surf park.
And, and are you guys talking 5% gross revenue also?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Just checking.
As well as $100,000 at the city for any kind of burden that we do place on the city. So that's all in the agreement. And I provided a signed copy.
I'm assuming that's a one-time type deal?
Yep.
Sounds good.
Thank you guys.
Good.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the time.
Okay, last up is Fox and Goose, that's the, you have the DA in front of you.
Good evening. You're getting a couple of items right now, sorry, last minute preparation here. So you're getting, it's not actually Fox and Goose either, that's the real estate entity that was taking down the property. It was just a clerical error, it's actually OnePlant is the dispensary brand name.
What, you said, so the name is what?
OnePlant.
OnePlant?
We actually have a, yeah, slideshow. So, so what you have here is, there's a site map right here, it's a larger inter-rendering. And then you have our, our brand package and investments and then you have a marketing packet for our dispensaries. So the going last dilemma, did, do I repeat the same thing as everyone else and hopefully remember it or just make it short? You guys have a tough decision, there are many qualified applicants here. I'll go over briefly kind of what might separate us apart from everything else that you've heard tonight. My name's Chris Hester.
Excuse me?
Talking.
Be quiet.
It's, it's, it's not, it's not because of that, the people are talking.
I could speak really loud too.
There you go.
Okay. Okay. Hi, my name's Chris Hester and I am an owner of OnePlant. We want to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present tonight. You know, obviously you do have a tough decision and again, I'll try to make this as short as possible. So briefly, I'm going to go over our executive team. OnePlant is our California dispensary brand, we are what's called an MSO or we refer as MSO as a multi-state operator. We have dispensaries throughout the United States. We, I'll go over our brands that we would be selling and that we own. And I go over some of our hiring practices, location, security, community partnerships and, and community development. So, so we have a highly seasoned operational team, we have operations currently operating, retail dispensary is our focus, but we also own cultivation sites, manufacturing sites, several different brands that we manufacture and sell out of those retail stores across the United States. We also have traditional business acumen, not in this sector, so some of our companies are more well-known like Pinkberry, Round Table Pizza, Hot Dog on a Stick, we also bring that outside business acumen in quick serve retail. So we're very focused on quick serve retail revenue generating enterprises. We have experience again in all facets of cannabis, vertically integrated, of course. Just here's some numbers briefly. We, I agree with everyone that, you know, you guys could do between 500 and 700 patients a day. I think that location is absolutely paramount in that. I think that using the freeways over there is absolutely paramount in that. And I think parking lot is absolutely paramount in that and being able to have quick access, traffic through the city. So if, if you look at traditionally what's gone on in the market, we're becoming a commodity. And so right now you have a lot of destination retail stores, so they have higher numbers. When we get homogen- When we get homogenized in these places all over, you're going to need to separate yourself from other brands. A lot of that's going to be based on location and ease in access into those facilities. So currently, revenue 2019, 110 million. Uh, vertical integration, uh, just kind of a, you know, diagram on the process of which we go through. Again, you don't have this specific slide in here, but you do have a brand package on, on, you know, what we're creating with a lot of these. Uh, so what, so what happens when you have your own brands and you control that supply chain? We obviously get all these products for a lot cheaper. We can deliver them to customers a lot cheaper, uh, and that ensures us a little more longevity. Uh, I wouldn't say that cannabis is completely recession-proof, but I mean, when the market tanks, we still are doing business. This allows us to compete on a different level though, uh, when we can deliver these products to consumers. Uh, you know, we generate a lot more revenue based on that. Uh, I'm a Marine Corps veteran, two tours in Iraq. Uh, I believe obviously very strongly in hiring veterans. I, I believe everyone agrees with that. Every single group has a veteran attached to it in some way or form. Um, we have veterans hiring practices, you know, we have livable wages. We also like to partner with the VFW or the Foreign Legion or the Legion and creating opportunities in the local environment that suits those different organizations. Uh, again, I'm just reiterating it. We do not have a set box on our community givings. We like to go into the community, find out what the city council needs, find out what the nonprofits in the community need. And then we like to work with the community and try to develop the best case scenario for that community. So here's some locations that we have currently licensed. Uh, we'll probably have another 18 in the next 18 months, I would say, open throughout California. Again, that's just California. Uh, so currently, I, I believe you guys have a, a little package on the location that we have. Uh, this locate, location's highly visible from the freeway. Again, I think that's paramount on driving revenue and revenue is tax dollars to the city. Also, parking is paramount. So location off the freeway with large parking, uh, you know, in a highly visible area. Uh, we like this because it's not going to impact the city infrastructure at all. It's away from it so that traffic's not going to be driven through the city. I mean, when you have 500 or 700 vehicles, I don't know if a traffic study's been done on that, but that could become a, a pain to say the least. I also think though that having something that is in the city core is important to facilitate easy access to people that are in the city. I also think that you should have something off-site. So here's another rendering of the building. This is the old McCann, uh, building, uh, it's for sale. We have, we have it in contract. Uh, here's some designs that we, uh, pretty much someone was, you know, saying Apple Store. Well, we have an open like floor plan you walk through. You have someone with an iPad that's, you know, ushering you through, educating you on the different products. And then they can press a button and when you get to the real, uh, register, all your products magically there. Just a quick couple more designs. Obviously, I could go through the security protocol again. You've heard it several times, uh, to be operational at this capacity, at this level. Uh, you know, I could say that our security is exceptional at this point. Um, we have a dispensary that's been operating for 10 years in El Sabrante. We have not had a police issue there in 10 years. So I could, you know, it's, it goes without saying that, you know, anyone that's going to be presenting up here, better have their security tied in, otherwise you wouldn't be winning these licenses. Uh, community partnerships again. One thing we did, uh, in Merced is, uh, there was a, uh, at-risk youth program there and they wanted to do job training for at-risk youth. And we basically have a, um, you know, a partnership agreement with them that we're going to buy them food trucks to train that at-risk youth and on-job training essentially. And so, you know, that's just one small thing that we, we would go into community and identify the, the nonprofits that we work with. Uh, also, um, mural projects, uh, in dilapidated areas, um, you know, graffiti abatement. Uh, obviously, we're policing the area around us. Someone said earlier that, you know, we see that the area would get better when a dispensary moves in. Typically, the area around it does get better because there's eyes on the street. You have a lot more people there. You have an armed security guard or two. Um, in, in general, we are, you know, beneficial to, to those areas that we're in. Uh, that was it. So it's just trying to get, get everyone out of here. Um, we understand that you guys have a tough decision ahead of us, ahead of you. Uh, we would love to be a part of this. Um, one thing that, um, is great about us, uh, there's very little risk in choosing us if you win. Uh, we are, uh, we have a lot of cash, uh, available to bring these, uh, opportunities to fruition. It costs, you know, six, seven figures to open up one of these stores and to make it look nice, um, to create some of these other business ventures. I mean, uh, we spent, you know, tens and tens of millions of dollars to create what we, what we have right now. So, you know, we have a proven track record of this and we would like to, uh, look forward to working with you guys.
So you're, you're just strictly looking for a dispenser. You're not looking to manufacture?
Uh, we, I, we, we are there already. Uh, we already have manufacturing facilities. Uh, we are strictly looking for retail outlets to deliver our product, product straight to market so we can have that margin. Uh, and we are retail-driven, uh, just by experience. So all the restaurants, you know, we have 1,500 restaurants under our umbrella. Our operational experience is driven through that quick serve retail. So, you know, yes, ba- basically we want dispensaries. We would also have a delivery service, uh, you know, and, um, if there was ever a lounge or something that the city would consider, uh, we would entertain that. We have enough space in that facility for it as well. So a lot of times what we see is, uh, you have a consumption problem, so save for those hotels over there. We, so downtown San Francisco, I'll tell you a story. Basically, we had a, uh, um, consumption lounge on the top floor, a green door, Howard Street, 6th and Howard. Uh, and what we started finding out was that people would come by product. People from out of state would come by product, but they wouldn't have anywhere to consume it. So I also think that that's a strategic location next to hotels. You can have a product, you can purchase it, you can consume it legally somewhere and then you can be on your way. Otherwise, where, where do you do with that product if you don't live here? So.
How many total dispensaries? You showed the map of California, but you said you're also involved, you know, throughout the United States.
Uh, there's 30 licensed facilities throughout Michigan, uh, Florida and California.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? See, there's none. I'm going to open it to the public. Anybody from the public want to expound on this? Seeing none, I think we're going to take a break. What, hold on, I got one.
Can't have them, nobody step up here, right? Jeff Garcia, property owner in downtown 162 West D Street. All the presentations were excellent, very informed, but I think we all learned a lot tonight. Um, and for the record, I'm not opposed to cannabis business at all. I think it's a great thing. I think there's a lot of, uh, medicinal purposes that are legitimate. And I think it would be a good addition to the community as well as a good revenue for taxes. For me, it comes down to location. I, I think location is important. I think the depot location for me personally, because I am a downtown business person, I think that's not a good site because of what's already there existing. I know we, we already talked about it a little bit with, uh, with, uh, the skateboard park and the basketball courts there. You know, they, they get heavy usage throughout the year, especially in the summertime. So it'd be a shame to see that impacted in a negative way. And I know there's already rules in place, um, from Proposition 64 that require some distances between cannabis dispensaries and schools and youth sports complexes and things like that. So it sounds like that might be a little bit of a, a conflict in use. Um, there's some discussion about moving those facilities, but I haven't heard where and, you know, when. So to me, that's, that's a problem. So for me, it's compatibility. Who would pay for the cost of the relocation? Where would it go and when would actually, when would it actually be built? So. And also a question, because I used to be on a, um, planning commission. Why aren't conditional use permits required for this business type? Because they're required for a lot of other business types, tattoo shops and many other, um, business types that we have. It seems that this should also be, um, required to have that. So for me, I would just say, you know, look at the locations. I think we've had a lot of great presentations. I think Industrial Park is nice. I think downtown Lemoore is, is nice as well, but let's keep it away from, uh, the current facilities for the youth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Reed, 1065 Lemoore. A lot of information here tonight. And while it's in the agenda packet that we can see online, it's awfully difficult to see that one screen at a time. You have the benefit of having those booklets in front of you, which makes it a lot easier. Uh, each of the presentations were different. They ca- carried a lot of the same information, very similar. But to me, what I think would be very beneficial to you and, and to us as members of the public is to have some sort of matrix. One, what sort of integration they're going to have. They're going to have just dispensary or they're going to have it all the way from top to bottom. That would be a nice comparison. Uh, also a comparison would be, when do they plan on starting? If they were given the go, how long would it be before they were in, in business? The wages, you know, not all of them answered that question. That would be a good point. I heard someone say, you know, $22 and someone said 15. Someone else said a livable wage, whatever that means. Uh, what you consider a livable wage and I do might be significantly different. I'd like to live like Lorenzo. But, but something like that, that you can have them side by side, all of those categories, make a comparison and then be able to make a good decision. Thank you.
Anyone else? I think Lorenzo's living like everybody. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break and come back. Welcome to Lemoore City Council Chambers, 429 C Street, month, August 20th, 2019. I would like Bishop Smith to come up here and do the invocation. As well as piggyback the First Lady, Mrs. Ma'ye Shanell. And everybody stand on the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this moment, this opportunity that you have given us for another council meeting. We thank you, oh God, for this leadership, for these great minds, God, that have come together, God, to render service unto you and also this city. Father, we ask you that you give them guidance, protection and keep them, oh God. Father, we pray that you have your way and your will in the lives individually and also in this city. We give you glory today in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Father God, we thank you for the prayer of Bishop Smith. And we thank you, Father God, for this great city. We thank you, Father God, for the leadership that you have placed, that you've installed in this city. We ask, oh God, that you would guide them, that you would lead them, Father God, that you would give them the desire, Father God, to seek the truth in all things and in all matters, Father God, that they would be busy serving their people, Father God, that they would be as shepherds who smell like their sheep. Father God, we just ask, oh God, that you would be in our midst on tonight. We ask, Lord God, that you would be in every decision, Father God, be in every action that's taken, be in every word that's spoken. We give you the glory, honor and praises. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We see it. Roll call.
Good evening, Councilmember Scaldi.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Lyons.
Here.
Mayor Neal.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, agenda approval additions and or deletions, are there any, City Manager?
Yeah, there's two, Mayor Neal. The first one is if we could move off consent, item 34, in place after new business, item 55.
Council, there will have to be a motion and a, and a vote on that request.
Motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown?
I will second.
Got a second by Ms., uh, Councilman Scaldi. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Scaldi?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
And then additionally, I believe there's an error in the minutes that the clerk will clarify for us. Oh, I'm sorry, we need to pull the minutes from consent calendar for correction. Item 3 dash 1. That, that's all.
That's it? Okay. All right, moving on, public comment. Anybody want to expound on anything that is not on the agenda? Come up, state your address, name, where you're from.
Hello, good evening. My name is Barbara Martin. I am a partnership specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau and in 2020, the census is coming. Um, I live in, here in Lemoore and, um, I was hired particularly because of, um, 10 years ago, we had an extreme undercount in the Central Valley. So what does that mean? That means our share of $675 billion doesn't come our way. So I hope to be invited back. I'll leave my information with the clerk, uh, to present a little bit more. I'm looking for partners to get to those hard-to-count communities. Um, it's been a lot in the news and so we need to clarify that it's safe and we need the participation. We need those dollars to come to our, to our area, our county. And I'm proud to represent, um, Kings County, Lemoore in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Connie Wollashen?
Good evening, Connie Wollashen, 523 C Street in Lemoore. I would like, um, number three on the consent calendar, I'd like some explanation on that. But, um, I have just a couple of quick things. Uh, what is the status of the Voorhees property in the industrial park? We haven't heard anything about that. And, um, last, last week, the, uh, oh, good grief, I'm sorry, great. Yeah, the, yeah. There was a, uh, who was purchasing the property on 19th Avenue? And I asked who was doing that because the city, I understood the city paid $900,000 for it and they were selling it for $91,000. Was that sale put out to bid and does the city still own it? And, oh, and the study sessions are not on YouTube? And your phone system is terrible. It's hard to get through to the city people. Terrible, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Wollashen. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and give that to City Manager.
So I spoke with Mr. Voorhees last week and he has engaged in new contracts to finish the road and the development out there on those eight parcels. And he has a completion date of the end of September. So, um, per council's direction, I had asked if we wanted to take that property back or work out a solution to get it built. And the consensus given was to find a solution to get it built. And that is part of one of these, um, one of these cannabis operators that wants to actually develop those parcels for cultivation and manufacturing things outside of a dispensary. So that's where, that's where that's at right now. But he does have contracts to have it completed by end of September. And then as far, what was the other question? Oh, there is no sale of the property on 19th and a half and Cedar. Um, during the planning commission meeting, the developer pulled out of the deal. So no, it's not for sale anywhere. City still owns it.
Thank you.
Well, she said one other thing. What about the phones? Are we going to fix the phones?
So we, we've had some issues with the internet this, this week, so that affected the phones a little bit. But, you know, if you, if you dial 924-6744 and enter your extension, you should get right in.
Ms. Wollashen, I'm with you.
I keep hearing this, but I- I keep hearing this, but I I'm not having troubles when I call in. So we'll have to take a look at it, but it sounds like something may be going on.
This afternoon, I called and I clicked number, whatever your extension is, and it took, it said, um what did it say? Oh, it it took me back someplace. Oh, I what did I want to go back to the original um thing? So I clicked it and nothing. So I didn't get
Well, we'll get it. I apologize for that.
Okay. That's a so that that was interesting about the Voorhees property. So who's gonna own that? Does the city, did the city get any money for that? Or did we have to pay four hundred and some thousand dollars in impact fees?
Yeah, just just come see me on the Voorhees property. We'll we'll have a discussion.
Okay, I'm sure I'm not the only one that wants to know.
Thank you, Ms. Wallashen. Okay, we're gonna go. Okay? All right.
Ray Etchegoy, four-seven-nine Blakely. So Mrs. Wallashen was talking about the planning commission meeting that we had last Monday, and we had a packed house. And but from what I understand, the people here in the audience, it was a handful that got actual public notice. Now, I know that we put public notice out. I'm not sure if it goes on our website or not. But um it only goes so many feet from a development that's going up. And I think that if something as big as what was gonna go on at Cedar and Nineteenth and a Half would impact more than just a few houses. So if I know we met the requirements of public notice, but I think if we could go above and beyond that and get out, I'm not talking about trying to spend more money, but maybe on put a public notice on social media or get the word out some other way so that more people understand, because I kept hearing from more than one person at that meeting, it sounds like the city is trying to throw on past this. And I, you know, I hate hate hearing that and having to try to convince people that that's not what the case was. It's really tough.
Well, thank you for defending that position, but we did put it on city's face. We put it on the the city's webpage. It was also noticed to the local Hanford newspaper, uh the local paper, and as well as the notices went out three hundred feet from the property, so the immediate. So but um I actually thought the turnout was great, so the word got out somehow. So, yeah, so I appreciate whoever put it on the mailbox, but thank you.
Kristen Curcio, resident of Lemoore. Um going towards transparency for the city, the issue that I have, and I don't know if I'm the only one that feels this, but for you to take something that was on the consent calendar to ask to be approved, and now you're asking it to be moved to after five-point-five, so that means after the cannabis retailer is selected, how can you have Valley Pure in an agenda item for consent calendar and then turn around with someone's name already listed on it, and then yet you still haven't voted on who you're gonna put in? So I have a problem with that.
Do you want me to answer that? Yeah, I can answer that. So as as part of the role tonight and ongoing negotiations, I'm gonna give a recommendation to counsel tonight. So this item should have been on new business at the end, but that is why I've moved it. I didn't realize it was on consent till just before the meeting. It should have been at the end of the meeting.
But you already have the name of the retailer that's on the space?
It's just for the lease. It's just for the lease of the the rail, of the train depot.
So a dispensary can be approved, but then down below
It's not. Go ahead.
Item three dash four that's been moved is just for the lease of the train depot. It is not an approval of a dispensary license.
But it's by a dispensary?
It is a dispensary company, but that doesn't, but it's just a lease. It's an independent lease.
So we're talking about the transparency, though?
Correct. It it is a lease of the building, and there will be other items discussed. It's up to counsel whether they approve that lease tonight or not, based upon other actions taken.
Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna go into ceremony and presentations. I see there's none. Department and City Manager Report, Section Two.
Uh Frank Rivera has an update on some roadwork.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Just have a brief update on our our uh summer slurry and overlay projects going on right now. Uh the five PFMD subdivisions, the slurry has been complete. And uh right now, the first coat of striping has been done wherever existing striping uh was existing. Um Hanford Road, of course, slurry has also been completed. They're actually cat-tracking for striping. Striping should be complete by the end of the week, and then QK, along with city staff, will go through the both projects and do a quality control inspection, come up with a punch list, but both projects seem to go fairly well so far, uh and they're on schedule. Regarding the overlay project, which you see Fox Street, uh it's currently getting a twelve-inch storm drain line put in currently. Uh we completed all the uh the concrete ADA improvements on Bush Street in front of the high school. I think everything is now complete, other than maybe striping, and then one um one traffic loop needs to be reconnected. Uh Vine Street between Iona and Idaho, uh that whole existing asphalt has been pulverized and removed down to the subgrade, so now the contractor is trying to achieve compaction, but again, everything's on schedule, so I just want to give you a brief update. There's a lot going on all over town. Yes, sir.
Being an educator in in Lemoore for for, you know, twenty years, I I I question, and I don't know the timing on this, if it's if it's a fiscal thing to deal with the fiscal year, but it seems that that the beginning of the school year, it always seems that there's some type of construction. I've had, you know, I I'm new to this, and so I'm having more people talk to me, which is nice. But I'm wondering why it always coincides with the beginning of school when when you have the most traffic?
Well, summertime is ideal, the ideal time to pave, you know, the hotter, the better for asphalt. Uh but this year, or last year, the there was some um gas tax money that all the cities were going after, so they wanted like your dream project to occur. So they had the city go through, you know, all these hoops to provide this um this dream project, but only like two or three cities got chosen. So we had to go out, rebid the project, and so by the time we go through the bidding process, the whole bit, that was probably one of the biggest delays, why we didn't start right when school went out.
Okay, thank you very much.
We we try to keep that in mind. Uh, you know, that's always our goal, to start right when school, you know, starts, but it's over. It's over. I'm sorry. It's over. We're doing a hundred on it, right?
It was your business.
Yeah. Anyway, no, we we will strive to do better next year, right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, very much. You have other questions?
Okay, moving on.
No, that's it for department reports.
Moving on. Going to consent calendar, Section Three. Three dash two approval, Summer King Valley Air Pollution Control District grant of gem carts. Three dash four approval, Train Depot.
They've got pulled.
They got pulled? Okay, that's gonna be five dash six then. Anybody want to pull anything from the consent counter? We're gonna go with counsel first. Now, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna open it to the public. Anybody want to pull something from the consent counter?
Connie Ericson.
Ms. Wallashen, we've got three questions.
We've got three. Your mic's not on.
Sorry, we have three dash three. We're gonna pull.
So counsel, we're gonna pull three dash one and three dash three.
And three, four.
Yeah, three, four is gonna be moved to five, six.
My bad.
Okay, okay.
So I make a motion to approve three dash two, three dash five, three dash six. Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Lyons, a second by Mr. Brown. Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Scaldi?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, three dash one. Approval minutes, regular meeting, August sixth, twenty nineteen of Marissa?
Good evening, Mayor. I stood on the five dash one, under the motions um for applicants John Plord, um Gwen, Gwendolyn Landris, and James Kilner. It stated that they were for District C, but they were actually applicants for District E. So um I printed an updated copy of the minutes to be signed today, so we'll just need to approve as amended.
Okay.
I motion to approve the amended minutes.
Got a motion by Mr. Lyons?
I will second that.
And a second by Mr. Scaldi. Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Scaldi?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes. Three dash three. Approve agreement to the Chris Com Company for governmental affairs consultant service, including lobbying grants service and government outreach with state lobbyists, California federal agencies. Nathan?
So this item was pulled, member of the public. So this is the standard contract that we've held with Chris Com for several years. It's coming upon the end. They provide us with state and federal lobbying, as well as there's been some additional services services written in now to provide grant services and grant writing to the city for the same cost as the existing contract. Month with a thirty-day termination by either party, so it's not a one- or two-year contract. It's a it's a month-to-month, and we can uh we can pull it in with thirty days' notice.
Question from counsel. Well, I have a question. Why month-to-month?
It just gives us some more flexibility. Um when we enter into two-year agreements with the state of the budget and not knowing where spends are coming from, sometimes it's it's hard to quantify what a lobbyist can do for you, because things take time. So uh, you know, still have the utmost faith that we're, you know, they're delivering on our behalf. I know they work hard for us up at the state and federal level, and with the grant writing, it'll give us something cognizant to go after. Um and they're gonna help us in that area, because there's grants available for beautification, relief, maybe some road infrastructures, stuff that we can get a little bit of help on, getting some extra monies into town.
I reason I'm asking this question, because I know uh Chris Com done a lot of work for that dispatch center. I think they they put in probably half a million or a million.
Yeah, they they were, we received, I believe, nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar grant from Assemblyman Salas's office.
That's why I question why month-to-month. I think they've been doing a fabulous job.
It's it's flexibility, Mayor Neal.
Okay, and what is it? Um Kings Ethanol Development, are they month-to-month?
They are currently they might have, I'd have to look at their contract. I can't remember if we renewed them for a year or for month-to-month with them as well. I'd have to look at the contract. I don't remember off the top of my head.
Okay, only reason I ask, because we let them go and then we brought them back. Um and do a great job, and also thank Chris Com does a great job, and I I feel that what's good for the goose is good for the gander. I don't know if they will feel real good about being month-to-month as well, so question.
Okay. Okay, well, and too, when I sent off the, uh when I was talking to Mr. Jolain from Chris Com, um when he came back with the changes to the scope of services, he actually had written in that we could go month-to-month, so I'm I'm, if I have the opportunity to not lock us in for long term
Yeah.
and have some flexibility, then I'm gonna opt to do that.
Okay. Okay. I'm gonna open it to the public. Anybody want to expound on this?
Connie Wallashen, five-two-three C Street in Lemoore. I know I'm beating a dead horse, but I personally think that the forty-five thousand dollars a year that we are spending on Chris Com, that money could be spent back into the budget, especially the Chamber of Commerce's budget. They had, they, I don't know how much money they make or bring into the city with their rock in the arbor, but and they usually do it all summer long. But this time, this year, they only did it one month. And I I I just, I I really have a problem with the city paying a lobbyist in Sacramento when we have wonderful staff that can do the same thing, that do grants and without, I I just it, to me, it's a waste of money. I think the money needs to stay in Lemoore. We have plenty of staff that can handle this, and when we cut we cut money from the Chamber of Commerce's budget and everybody else's budget, and we're paying a lobbyist, I I just feel like that's a waste of money.
Thank you, Ms. Wallashen. Anyone else?
Mary, eight-nine-five-four, Hanford Ramona Road. Um I've I've seen them work in different communities. Uh they've also worked over in in Corcoran. Uh and they've they've brought in more than what, way more in different funds such as grants uh than than the forty-five thousand. Uh I know over in Corcoran, you know, they they help facilitate wars with, uh, you know, and, uh, you know, so they have brought in potentially more than the forty-five thousand dollars a year, or whatever it happens to be. And since it's on a month-to-month, if they like start slacking off, you have the the flexibility. I do feel that the Chamber of Commerce is definitely worthwhile. They are great for the community. Um I don't know if all their funding should come here, but they should probably definitely involve to help fund it and then get get more support from the community.
Absolutely. Anyone else?
Good evening, everybody. Uh Jason Seegan, I'm the Chief Operating Officer of the Chris Com Company. Uh thank you for having me here. Um Mayor, just thank you for your kind words. Uh just wanted to point a clarification on the month-to-month. Our contracts always have a thirty-day exit clause in it. It could be a two-year contract, a ten-year contract. We built those in since day one, because if you're not happy with our service, you can exercise that right. And if we're not happy working with the city, we can exercise that right. And um we've never done that, and uh never had a city cut us short, but when uh City Manager Olson asked if we would agree to that, we agreed to that. So thank you very much.
Excuse me, could I ask you a question? Uh are you guys working with the county as well?
Well, we work for the Kings County Sheriff's Office.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments? Motion by Mr. Brown, a second by Mr. Lyons. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Scaldi?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Okay, three dash five?
No. Where did you down at?
Four dash one. You're moving pretty fast. Public hearing, abatement of public nuisance. Mr. Rivera?
Good evening again.
Thank you.
Um on August sixth, two thousand nineteen, the City Council adopted Resolution uh twenty nineteen dash thirty-one, identifying locations within the city that are in violation of City Ordinance eight dash two dash one. Since then, staff has mailed each of the listed property owners a letter identifying the resolution and inviting them to attend tonight's council meeting. The same letter was posted in the Hanford Sentinel and hand-delivered, and a hand-delivered copy was left on on all doors that had structures. Staff requests the City Council uh to hear any objections at this time provided um by the public and direct staff by motion to proceed with the abatement, postpone the abatement, or cease abatement on the properties listed in the resolution, and you have a copy of the properties. If uh if staff is directed to proceed, staff will return at a later date with the financial costs associated with each property.
Any questions? No? Open it to the public? Public hearing? Section five. Okay, we won't go to five dash. I see that. There's none, so I'm gonna bring it back to the council. Anybody from the public? Come close it. Bring it back to the council. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion, recommend that we proceed uh with direction to go forth and with the uh abatement process.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown, a second by Mr. Lyons. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Scaldi?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
Going to new businesses, Section five. Five dash one, reporting recommendations, appointment Five dash one, reporting recommendations appointment of City Council applicant of District E. Ms. Rivera?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At the meeting on August 6, you have the opportunity to review applications and listen to candidates speak for the District E position. Council selected applicant Hugh Allen. However, a request to withdraw was received by Mr. Allen. Currently, there are seven eligible candidates still interested in the position. At this time, you have the opportunity to discuss and take action on this item. I will accept nominations for District E once council is ready to do so. The current seven eligible candidates are Guadalupe Capozzi, James Kilner, Gwendolyn, Sue Landris, Patricia Matthews, John Plord, Shelley Reese, Willard Reddormal, Teagan Winters.
All right. Any comments from the public? Move it back to council? Council? Public?
Willard Reddormal, 460 West Diodor. I apologize for not being in the last meeting. I had surgery and the pain level wasn't allowing me. But I think you all know my community service, 30 years as volunteer fire department, not with City Lemoore, with County Kings, but also served with Lemoore whenever I could. Two terms on the City Council, as term in mayor, two terms in planning commission, 12 years with the Rotary Club. Best member here in the community. Sold my business three years ago after 24 years. You know, wife and I kind of retired. And we figured out what the golden age was. It's when you're still young and living at home with mom and dad and they're paying the bills. It's not when you retire. I look forward to serving the city again. If I can, if I get appointed, that would be super. If pick somebody else, that's fine too, as long as whoever we pick, it works for the unity of the council and for the betterment of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Tom Reed, 1060 Park, Lemoore. I was unable to attend the previous meeting when, how shall I call it? When we were trying to elect someone to District E was less than admirable. Let me call it that way. I believe the council engaged in a game of tit for tat. You wouldn't second my nominee, or you wouldn't vote for my nominee, so I won't vote for yours. And I believe Mr. Allen was the sixth nominee. And I find that hard to believe that this council could not agree on a person before then. I've read all those resumes, some very impressive resumes. And unless, unless you have a problem with one of them and someone has made a nomination and has been seconded, I don't see how you can vote no. They're all qualified. I think we need to have a better process this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Bringing it back to council?
Like. Make nominations, right?
Yeah, I will accept nominations.
I'd like to nominate John Plord.
Have a motion by Councilmember Brown to nominate John Plord. Do I have a second?
Second.
I would take a rock, roll call vote. Councilmember Scaldi?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lyons?
Aye.
Mayor Neal?
No.
We do have a consensus. So your new council member for District E is John Plord.
Five dash two?
Congratulations. Five dash two, I will administer the oath. You do not have to repeat after me. I will read it to you and you'll just say I do if you can raise your right hand. I, John Plord, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance, allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I will take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. You are official. Wanna sign?
Done this.
All righty, congratulations. You can take a seat on the side.
Oh, sorry.
Five dash three?
So at this time, we'll do a reorganization of the council. So while Lemoore Municipal's Code is silent on the election of mayor and mayor pro temp?
I believe the, the new elected council member would like to make a statement.
Okay.
Turn this mic on.
A few notes. Anyways, the last couple of years has been pretty difficult. And I thought I might say a few words on, on behalf of the staff and the City Council. I wanted to thank the mayor for his service for the last two years. The average period for a mayor is about two years. And I've been appointed twice before, now the third time. And I served four years on the, on the City Council before. And I served under Ed Martin, Mayor Turvis, Mayor John Murray, Mayor Willard Reddormal. I was on the City Council with William Siegel, and now I have Eddie Neal. So I, all of those mayors had challenges. But I think Eddie Neal has had the most challenges over the last two years of any mayor that I've served with. So I want to take this opportunity to let the community congratulate him and thank him for his service.
Thank you. Thank you.
And so with that, I want to thank everybody and appreciate your support and let's move on.
And we're going on to five dash three. Really appreciate that. Reporting recommendations of City Council reorganization, elect of mayor and mayor pro temp. Marissa?
Good evening again. So while the Lemoore Municipal Code is silent on the election of mayor and mayor pro temp, the city's practice has been to hold an election of the mayor and mayor pro temp among the council members every two years. With the appointment of the two new city council members, consensus was received at the August 6, 2019 meeting for a reorganization of the council, the election of the mayor and mayor pro temp. I will chair the reorganization process. I will call for nominations for mayor. Any council member may nominate another council member or himself. When there are no further nominations, I will close the nominations and call for a motion to approve a nominee. If there is more than one nomination, a vote will be taken in last name alphabetical order. A council member may make a motion to approve any of the nominees. If the motion fails, a council member may make a motion to approve a different nominee. Upon the second and a majority vote of the council, a nominee shall become the mayor. The same process is followed for the position of mayor pro temp. So.
Is it open for nominations?
I think I'm gonna open it to the public for this.
There are members of the public that would like to speak, at least if given a hand nod, if council's acceptable of that process.
Absolutely.
Tom Reed, 1060 Park, Lemoore. Typically, when the council reorganizes, it's after the general election and even numbered years. And unless there's a specific reason to reorganize the council, it shouldn't be done. I realize that we have two new council members. But the only thing that really happened is the mayor pro temp resigned. I see no need to elect a new mayor. We have a mayor. He has done a good job. He has done nothing to disqualify himself from that position. I recommend that you proceed straight to nominating a mayor pro temp. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
Yes, my name is Lorenzo Neal, and just wanted to come up and just say a couple of words. Just seeing if this is truly, you know, the three things that I use to talk about is competency, character, and credibility. And if you have two, you know, police and then two firemen, is, is that going to be a true indication of the, of the community? And that, how is that going to really look like it's serving in the right direction? And I just like to know what it, what has the mayor, and I know with all due respect, sir, you said that it's been two years. I think it's been eight months. I don't think it's been quite two years. So just wanting to know what is some of the qualifications or what is disqualifying the mayor from his, from his position?
Anybody else from the public?
Hi, my name's Brian Nevz. I live here in Lemoore, 1057 Jade Way. I was just kind of listening to what he was saying. And I'm just going to speak on behalf of my friend Eddie Neal. We speak weekly about what he does at his job. And I know that we're kind of talking about a realignment. And I just don't understand why we're realigning when it's not a new election. I know that the one retired or resigned, so. But I kind of agree with what this gentleman, I'm sorry, I didn't know you didn't, what he was saying. I just don't see why we're realigning now when we only have one year to go. And I think the mayor's done a good job. I know he speaks to me on a daily, daily and weekly basis about what he does and about the people he works with. And let me tell you, first of all, he really appreciates the people he works with. There's a lot of people that might think that there's a rift going on between some of us. But I tell you, he speaks very highly of each and every one of you. And he was very excited to work with all of you. Even some of the people that you think you may have a rift with him, I don't know. He's been so excited working. And on a daily basis, he asked me, do you think I'm doing a good job? And I always tell him, you know, you do with what your heart says to do. Do what you believe is right, and you will always be right if you believe with what your heart is. And I think he makes every decision with his heart and what he believes is best for his constituents of the city of Lemoore. I really know he does that, and he does his best job. Now, I've watched today's meeting, and I think today's meeting's been a great meeting. I think everyone's been here properly. I think the council was running great. I think he's doing a great job. I think the rest of you guys are doing a great job. I just really see a bright future for our council and for our city. And I think, just let it go. I think, I think we're gonna, I think we're going on the right track. So I just hope you guys kind of can see that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Rosemarie Rodriguez. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I'm at 663 19 and a half Avenue here in Lemoore. I just wanted to share, going back to what this gentleman talked about, that Mayor Neal does things with his heart and it makes a difference. I lost my dad five months ago, and I had a situation with the cemetery. And I thought to myself, what should I do? Lemoore's growing and these other ideas were, you know, coming in my mind. And I said, I'm going to reach out to the mayor. And I did. I called him and bless his heart and bless those of you who serve and help the regular people here in the community. He was able to work with the cemetery, and we were able to bury my dad in a, in a good amount of time, and that means everything. As a mayor, Mayor Neal, you have done a wonderful job, in my opinion, personally and what I've heard from other people. I want to say you're, you're just real. And I, I appreciate that in the mayor of Lemoore. I just want to say thank you. And I, again, do not, like the others were saying, I do not think you need to realign the mayor. See? He's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Take your time, sir.
Willard Reddormal, 460 West Diodor. Just hoping you don't get the injuries I've had 12 years ago. Hopefully, that's my last surgery for him. Anyway, I agree in with what everybody else is saying here. We normally elect a mayor for a two year term. Eddie's been in it for eight months. I see there's no reason to realign that position. Mr. Billensley resigned, moved out of state. That seat is open. That seat needs to be filled. That's the only comment I have to say. And I was on council when Eddie first came aboard, and I followed Eddie. Eddie has came a long ways since his first months. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, Dr. Gil Crumbs. Good evening to mayor and all the council members. I'm sorry. Try not to yell into the mic. The mayor has been doing a really good job. This realignment, I don't understand. I'm gonna come from a citizen point of view and a citizen of the African American point of view. I look around and I see he's the first and the only when I do, when I did a little bit of research. There's only been two women since the history of the, of the city of Lemoore. There's, where's the diversity? You have women that ran. You had two times, you had options to pick a woman, and you did not. I'm not downing you guys. I'm sure you can do a good job. But we had women that ran for office and they didn't get picked. You had two chances to do that. Now we're looking at realignment? For what? What are we, what are we changing? I thought the change has already been made. We have two new guys. So now we're doing a, a realignment? There's some confusion here, and I need some clarity.
Anyone else?
My name is Shelley Reese from 571 Tamarack Lane. I just wanted to agree with some of the others that came up here. I feel like if it was to happen, if you guys were to do a realignment right now, it would kind of upset the whole piece. Because right now is in the middle of, like you said, you've only been doing, you know, like the eight months. Like, why would you choose to just jump and all of a sudden move everybody around when you're, most of you are new on here anyways? So I just wanted to say, Eddie, you've been doing a great job. I have a lot of people who talk to me all the time from different businesses. Some of the new businesses that's came in over the last couple of years. Some of the longtime businesses that's been around here for a long time, friends that I've known. And all of them speak very highly of you and what kind of job you do. And they, all, everybody, the biggest thing is they always say, he speaks from the heart. He's a very down to earth, personable person. And that means a lot to the people of Lemoore. So I just wanted to let you know. I hope that you do not do this realignment. I think it really would be a negative effect. But once again, I want you to know you're doing a great job.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, my name is Eugene Neal, 114 McNoe Avenue. And I've been around here quite a while. But I'm just like the rest of them. I got up and spoke. I don't see why, this hadn't, never been in my knowledge of changing right now. You only have eight months, whatever, to go. Why all the certainty? We're gonna reshuffle the board? We thought we had everything clear when we couple left or whatever. But now we turn it all over again, looking like we just spinning our wheel, not getting it worked. I don't know. I don't understand that. Somebody had to tell me why we're doing this. Never happened before. Never happened before. Now, John, he'd been on here quite a while. This is the third time here. I've been knowing John a long time. But I don't understand that somebody tell me why you're changing right in the middle of the street. This don't seem right to me. Something a little, little strange with this. I don't know. Never, never nobody ever did that. And I Never, nobody ever did that, and I never heard. So this boy must have to do something to regroup this stuff, because something wrong somewhere.
Can I answer that, please?
Dr. Crystal Jackson, president of the NAACP, Kings and Tulare County. First of all, I need to make a correction as far as the women. There have been four women on the end of on the dais. Barbara, and I can't remember her last name.
Wykoff.
Mm-hmm. Then you had Linda, Mary Hornsberry, and then Holly Blair.
Lois Wynn.
Thank you. Lois Wynn. All right, because you guys are taking up my time. My first question is why? Why would you want to do this at this point in time? Have we haven't we not been through enough chaos? Have this, how much more do you need to turn this city upside down? Because we have been sitting in that direction for so long, and it's enough. It's time to say it's enough. It's time to say, let's move on. My other, my next statement is, where is the diversity? Where is the diversity? At the last meeting I was watching on YouTube, every single woman that that had their name called, there was a no. Where is the diversity? Are you going to choose to get along? Are you going to choose to move along as a team and as a unit? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Members of the Lemoore City Council. My name is Richard Valley. I represent District Two of the Kings County Board of Supervisors for the last 11 years, and I come before you in your chambers this evening respectfully and in the spirit of teamwork. And with that being said, there's a group that I I serve with. It's called the Kings County Latino Roundtable. It's made up of elected officials from all races around Kings County. Well, I've served with them for the last 15 years as well. They've asked me to come this evening and read this letter. It's a letter of support, and I'm gonna be very quick and leave it to your clerk on the record. To Lemoore City Council, the Kings County Latino Roundtable strongly supports Councilmember Eddie Neal, member for mayor with the city of Lemoore. Mayor Neal and the Kings County Latino Roundtable have had a professional working relationship for many years on projects that include commercial, industrial, and residential development in Lemoore and throughout Kings County. Mr. Neal has been a strong community leader, is a board member of the Kings Community Action Organization, and has been a strong voice in addressing the high refuse rates at KWRA that affect Lemoore, Corcoran, Hanford, and the county of Kings. Kings County Latino Roundtable has thoroughly enjoyed working with Mayor Neal and have come to know him as a valuable asset to any commission, study team, or city council. He is honest, dependable, and incredibly hardworking. Beyond that, he is an impressive civic leader who wholeheartedly serves the people of Lemoore and Kings County. It would be a great travesty to realign the Lemoore City Council by removing Mayor Neal as a mayor. His dedication to public service has truly left an influential and historical mark in Lemoore and throughout Kings County. We feel that his public service record honorably warrants his position as mayor of Lemoore. The Roundtable supports Mayor Neal and is requesting that Mayor Neal remain on as the mayor of the city of Lemoore respectfully. Kings County Latino Roundtable. This letter is dated May 17, 2019. It was written at a time when there was rumor going around that the mayor might be asked to step down. And so the reason why we didn't bring this letter back in May is because there was a newspaper story in the Hanford Sednal, and we read the Honorable Mr. Brown's comments where he said that this wasn't anything he was aware of, or this wasn't anything that he supported, and we believed in the integrity of Mr. Brown, his character, and so this letter was not brought forward at that time, and we appreciate that. That action is never taken. And also, I also read the Honorable Mr. Brown's comments, I believe, in the Lemoore leader about two weeks ago, and and I stand with him in support where he said something to the effect that just because it had to be agendized doesn't mean that the mayor was going to be realigned. And procedure-wise, and and I have to deal with this too at the Board of Supervisors, procedure-wise, the staff may have had to put realignment of mayor and vice mayor in order for you to get to the vice mayor. And so in defense, I want to put that too. But again, I'm here before you respectfully. I've worked with your chief of police and Chris Com over the years to help bring home that $900,000 for your public safety of Lemoore. I've got a few trips under my belt with with your police chief. I'm sure he could speak to support of that. And also, as some of your constituents have said, to that keeping the mayor sends a positive message out beyond these chambers and throughout Kings County, I want to support that because they're right. It does share a message of teamwork. When we go to Sacramento, we go together as a San Marquinhale Valley delegation, because we know when we're up there before the Senate or the Assembly, all those votes are coming from San Francisco and LA, and it makes it tough. If we don't stick together as as one county and one voice when we're up there, we're dead in the water. We're not bringing back home what we need for public safety and for the folks of Lemoore. So I'm going to wrap up by just asking that we stick with that spirit of teamwork. So thank you for your time, gentlemen, council.
Good evening, I'm Tracy Landers at 161 West Glendale. I had Eddie in school, but that's for another time. I guess my question's for Mr. Olson. Is there anything in the city charter that requires a realignment at this meeting?
Not that I'm aware of. It was asked by me at after the last, after the last appointment, if they wanted to consider realignment, and consensus was given to put it on the agenda.
Okay, then my recommendation is that we do a mayor pro temp and get on with, get on with the business of the city. Thank you.
And I'd like to piggyback on that, just to say the reason is, it's because we had two other council members come on board, and they, I've, you know, they should have a voice too, because they also represent the city. It wasn't to realign or to pick on or to do anything to Mayor Neal. Okay? There's been some things said that is incorrect in the papers. Okay? And I'm going to leave it there because I don't want to, that needs to stay right there. Okay? But that was the only thing. Okay? To let these other two council members vote for their mayor. The mayor is appointed. The mayor is supposed to do what the council, to carry forth the message of the council. Okay? We're not Fresno. Okay? I don't, if if this council can nominate and and put Mayor Neal back in the position, okay, that's their choice. That's the reason why. That's the reason why I vote. I gave my head nod to the city manager. Okay? And that is the honest God's truth. Okay? No matter what else is said. Thank you.
It's still open to the public. Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Maeshneal 851 East Cinnamon Drive, Lemoore. Page, page two, chapter two of the council's conduct or rules of order that you guys all established states that the mayor shall be elected every two years from among the council members by a majority vote at the council's first meeting or in January, which has taken place, and we now have a mayor according to your your own rules. It also says council members may remove the mayor due to a lack of confidence or a violation of the Lemoore's code of conduct. And from what we've heard tonight, that has not taken place. The only reasoning was to allow the two new council members to select their mayors. So, you know, technically, the whole ordeal is is out of compliance with your own rules if if it's if it's not due to a lack of confidence or a violation of the code of conduct. In a recent Hanford Sednal article, the Honorable Mr. Brown and the Honorable Mr. Lyons both portrayed, in my opinion, to have confidence in the mayor's ability to perform his duty as mayor. And lastly, you know, when Ms. Blair's seat was vacated, it was based upon the council's code of conduct. And so I ask the council use that same consistency with regards to the mayor's seat. If he has not violated the code of conduct or has lost your confidence that you would keep him in his position as mayor. Confucius wrote, "Go before the people with your example and be laborers in their affairs." And so I'm charging this council to be laborers, not of their own affairs, but of the business of the people. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Kristen Percy again. Again, the issue that I'm having with all of this is the transparency. You've been tagged already as a board, excluding the new ones, as being a good old boy system as it is. And knowing that this is coming about because there's so much talk in the community, it's not, for me, it's not about whether I like you or I don't like you. It's a matter of whether I trust that you're doing the right thing with my tax dollars. Eddie, you're a good guy, and I get all that, but I'm telling you, this, the problem with all this, I'm watching body language, is it goes to transparency and it goes to trust. And this is just reinforcing the lack of trust that we have, or I have, in you as
Anyone else? Closing it, bringing it back to the council?
I have a question for the city attorney. There was a statement written concerning our, what's in our code of conduct. Could you elaborate or could you give us more knowledge on the the termine, about the two years, please?
If you'll bear with me, I just want to make sure I have the language in front of me. Typically, while I'm doing that, typically, the council rules of procedure are adopted by the council for guidelines. They are guidelines, and council has the ability to change them if they so choose legally. Let me go to that section. And I apologize, council, I had it tagged on my iPad, which died, so give me a second.
my opinion is I still feel that the that the other two council members should have a voice, and their voice should be heard. Those are voices of the other districts. Okay? It's nothing personal. I guarantee you that. If it was personal, I would leave this council right now. I would resign. I'm telling you that right now. Okay? Ethics, integrity, means a lot to me. Okay? And I'm not going to say, and that's all I'm going to say, so.
Okay.
That's it. And and I I make a motion that we go ahead and proceed.
So, council, just to answer your, Councilmember Brown, just to answer your question. Section four of the council rules of procedure does say that council members may remove the council-appointed mayor or the mayor pro temp. As Mrs. Neal said, due to a lack of confidence violation, the consensus of at least three members, if the mayor is removed, the mayor pro temp may take the position of the mayor or the new mayor, a new mayor pro temp will be appointed by consensus. These rules are for interpretation and council's interpretation in particular. It does say that they will be aligned every two years. That is typically associated with the election of council every two years. The rules are guidelines, and council, under Rosenberg's rules of order, have the ability to bypass their guidelines or change their guidelines if they so choose, or make exceptions. I I do know that prior, there was at least one other incident in Lemoore's history where a mayor was removed before the two years. That was due to, I was not here at the time, my understanding, and so if I state this wrong, I apologize, my understanding was that it was due to some issue that had occurred on the council at the time. Other than that, it really is council's choice.
In my personal feeling, or my feeling is, as a council member, this has nothing to do with that. It's not due to performance. It's not due, it's allowing two other council members, and I'm beating it to death, it's allowing two other council members from the two other districts to appoint their mayor because they, that mayor is supposed to represent the council. Okay? The council, the council represents the people. Council has just as much power as a mayor does, with the exception of running the meetings, going to the meetings, or going to city functions and things of that nature. Other than that, the mayor of the city of Lemoore has no other really, you know, they could sign the papers and things of that nature. What I'm trying to get at is, is, once again, and and if if somebody wants to go ahead and pull it, they pull it. That's how I feel. And that's how constituents of mine, you know, people have pros and cons, people are for it, people are not, not for it. But that's how I feel. So.
Can I go ahead and add something? I think, I think all of us need to cast a vote on what's best for the city of Lemoore. And you don't really make a vote until you've heard all of the testimony, you've gone through all of the staff reports, you've heard all of the evidence that's available, you formulate a decision, and go go with it. And the testimony in the room here is pretty overwhelming. I haven't heard anybody speak against the mayor, but I really, I'm not saying that there's some, not people in the room that that have some issues with the mayor, but we have to vote on what's in the best interest for the city of Lemoore. We could decide to table the first part of this staff report for a year and four months if we want to, for the next election, if we want to. But we don't have to. We can vote tonight and and reelect somebody as mayor, but think inside, what is in the best interest for the city of Lemoore? And that's what you go with. And it's not a personality issue. It's not a ethnic diversity issue. It's what's in the best interest for the city of Lemoore. So I I would move that we table the first half of this election for mayor for, until the next election.
I agree. I agree with you, Mr. Brown, 100%. I think both these guys, they should be a part of electing the mayor, but if Mr. Plored the way he's saying, I I agree with him 100%. And I agree with you 100%. I know that sounds contradicting, but.
No, it does make sense to me. Okay? It does make sense to me, because it's the new, two new council members, if that's what their decision is, then I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
And 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 my thing is, is because, once again, And my thing is, is because, once again, that was the only reason behind it, that was the only reason behind it, is to have those two other council members to have a voice. Transparency, got to have a voice, has nothing to do with anything else, so. You're good, then we table it.
Can I go ahead and make a motion? I motion that we table the election for mayor until the next election.
Second.
I got a motion by Mr. Plour, a second by Mr. Lyons. Mr. Stuart?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
I said, Mr. Stuart, Mr. Lyons.
Yeah, I didn't know when to vote, I'm sorry.
This is too much on me right now, you guys, you guys got me looking all around and I'm, I want to go high. Anyway, a motion by Mr. Plour, a second by Mr. Lyons. Mr. Plour?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Scaldi?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you.
So now I will open nominations for mayor pro temp.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Brown.
I would like to second that.
Mr. Lyons?
Do we have any other nominations?
No, I think she doesn't.
Any more nominations? I would like to nominate Mr. Plour for vice mayor. Do I get a second?
Yeah, I'll second him too.
Mr. Lyons?
No.
Do I got anybody else?
Any other nominations?
No, and I'm going to resign. I don't want to do mayor pro temp. So I agree for Mr. Plour.
Can I get a second?
Okay, so I have a motion by Mayor Neal to nominate John Plour as mayor pro temp. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
That's a number Lyons.
Okay. Mr. Lyons?
Mr. Neal, Mayor Neal?
Aye.
Lyons?
Aye.
Plour?
Aye.
Scaldi?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
And your new mayor pro temp is John Plour.
Keep your seat. It's next. Five dash four, okay.
They're shuffling, give them a second.
How'd I get here?
It just might come through.
This is not what I expected.
You're doing fine. You said that before.
I just happen to be mayor pro temp when I left the council in 2012, so the city doesn't have to pay for a new sign plaque for them.
That's right.
So let's move on.
Save the dollar we can.
Five dash four.
Are you tired of me yet? Good evening, it's that time of year again for the League of California Cities Annual Conference to appoint a council member as a voting delegate and another as an alternate. The 2019 Annual Conference is scheduled for Wednesday, October 16th through Friday, October 18th in Long Beach. On Friday, there is a business meeting, this is where membership takes action on legislative and policy issues. It is not required to send a council member. If you choose to, there is a minimum registration fee for the business meeting, which is $325. Last year, council member Brown and Mayor Neal attended the conference. It is estimated 1,500 for registration and travel for this conference. There is $3,000 budgeted in the city council training budget. It is recommended that council, city council appoint a voting delegate and an alternate for the League of California Cities Conference in October.
Is it time to comment? Okay, I would like to do is just say we should just send one person. Last year when I went, two of us went. Theoretically, I think it would save the city money if just one person went, one council member. Only takes one person to do the voting anyway. The other, you know, I mean, you go to different meetings and things of that nature, you get the information, you bring it back, and then you bring it back to the city manager and to the council, and you talk about it then. But that would just be my two cents since I went last year. And then another one is, is maybe if somebody else wants to go, hasn't been, okay? So, because I was a voting member last year, so that's all I have to say.
Okay. I must say, I've been on the League of Cities for the last six years. I was selected at that board, I'm the Kings County rep for the League of Cities, so I speak on behalf of Kings County. But if, I may, if we got two new council members, I would like to see if you would like to go.
Speaking. I would be willing to go if the council would like me to go. I do however, agree with Councilman Brown that, and never have been there before, but if it's fiscally not smart to go and send two people, why are we going to spend that extra $1,500 or whatever it costs for the registration fees? If we only need one individual there representing us as a city and one vote?
That's what I was saying, you have K.CAG, who's on K.CAG?
I am.
Okay. I'm just saying, I'm on this board, but if I'm given the opportunity, one of you new individuals on there, although you're not new, you're older.
There's been a few of them.
I've been the voting delegate for three of these annual conferences and I find that they save the last vote for the last hour of the last minute of the conference. And so everything that they want to know from the cities happens at the last end of the conference. By then, only the voting delegates are left. Everybody else is taking off to the four winds, going to North California, South California, east and west. So I would recommend that we just do it like a day trip and send just one person to represent the city. Although we do have it in the budget to send two people, I think it would probably be economical to just send one person to represent the city and take care of the vote.
Yeah, I nominate Chris to go.
I second.
Hey, Chris, if you can't make it, then just come back, let me see if something happens, somebody else will jump in.
Exactly. No, I can definitely make it.
Okay. Good.
So a day trip?
He's friendly and built the entire, for his first time he's been.
First time.
Now there's some just recommendations.
It is an educational opportunity because they have many seminars that you can go to and you find out the difference between a CUP and a PUD and all that. So if you've never been on the planning commission...
I have not.
You'll find out what you didn't know when you get here.
Yeah, I think Mr. Scaldi should do the whole thing, not just one day.
So, okay. So I got a motion?
Yeah, I'm motioning Mr. Scaldi gross, the whole thing.
Take the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, we're good.
Oh, Chris, you got to do the whole thing.
Okay. We're going to go to five dash five, reporting recommendations, cannabis, retail selection, Olson?
Good evening, mayor and council members. So, big decision in front of us tonight. Couple of things I want to point out, just kind of how did we get to this point? So, you know, the state, the state allows deliveries to local jurisdictions, we can't stop that. So the state kind of let the train out of the station. And part of coming back with the cannabis ordinance, there's many facets of it, but one was to kind of control the implementation of cannabis into the city, kind of get our arms around it and help guide and direct it. There is some legislation out there now that's going to mandate that cities and incorporated areas of the counties do have representation of retail establishments. So it's coming whether we like it or not, so this kind of gets us ahead of it. Obviously, it produces revenue to the general fund. Everybody knows we're in a budget deficit this year, and most of the deficit is inclusive of salary and benefits for our employees of the city. So no matter how hard we tighten up the budgetary on spending operationally to run the city, we're pretty much on a shoestring, so the options of fixing this sort of raise revenues, okay? I can't, I can't lay people off or unspend my way out of the deficit we're currently in. And then, sales tax revenues have been flat over the last couple of years. We're not growing as a city, we're growing as a city as far as people goes, but we're not growing our business base, we're not growing our tax base. So cannabis is in no way the savior to all our woes, but it's a kind of a kickstart to the economy, is how I look at it. I look at some of the cities that have implemented and have revitalized downtowns. So a lot of that has been weighing on me and this decision and the recommendation I'm about to make to you guys to give me direction to continue to negotiate, continue negotiating with a couple of companies out there for dispensaries. You know, I sat in front of the planning commission, in front of residents, and in my office with people and told them that cannabis would be good for the city of Lemoore. Okay? I put my word on that. So this process and who we get in here is, in our city, it makes a difference. You know, at the end of the day, I'm going to be the guy and you're going to be the council that brought cannabis to Lemoore. So we need to be certain on where it is. And it's tough, I've met some really good companies, I've met some great people, and it's, the city's kind of in a win-win here because there's a lot of operators out there that can bring in the revenues, bring in the public benefit. But, you know, so, kind of give you my thought process, and I had one of the young ladies say that I wasn't being transparent, the difference on some of these agreements is everybody else that's going after a cannabis or dispensary license here is dealing with private owners of private buildings. When you're dealing with a public entity and a lease is involved, there's more to do. So that's why you see a lease on here for the rail tonight, because if Valley Pier is one of the companies that gets direction to continue to work with, I need to give them the same opportunity as everybody else that went out and has something in the private world, so it's just an extra hoop to get through. One of the other things I've been trying to do as your city manager is get to market before our competitors do, seven miles up the road. Okay? We get beat on retail all day long by our neighbor to the west, to the east, not on this one. I want to beat Hanford to a dispensary. I think first to market matters, I really do, especially in a slow area like this. People will drive the extra few miles if we have the right products, the right people, the right culture to come to. At least that's what the research tells me, that's what people in the business tell me. The other big decision here is when I was talking to dispensaries, they said, well, there's two things you can do. We can open one downtown, or you can open one on the outskirts of town. Choice is yours, you're going to make the same amount of money no matter what. If we sell $10 million uptown or we sell $10 million south of town, it's $10 million. But if you want to grow your economy and see what can happen with the foot traffic, it's highly recommended we put a dispensary downtown. You know, since I've been with the city as the public works director and the city manager, one common theme from business owners downtown is we don't have enough foot traffic, we need foot traffic, generate foot traffic. So now we have an ordinance that was passed on July 2nd, became effective August 2nd, and now we're here at a selection process. I know there's people that aren't happy about some of the locations. There was talk earlier about the skate park and why mess up a good thing, and the splash pad, okay? And if you guys want transparency, I'm going to give you transparency right now. When all that stuff was put in there, we didn't know it was around the corner, but we have an opportunity now to do something good for that area. So the train depot, in my opinion, and I'll cover that with council, is a good location for a downtown dispensary, and I'll tell you why. One, it has been damaged by fire, so there's $127,000, $128,000 worth of damage to the building that, if leased, the company is going to fix under their own dime. So that saves the city $127,000 that came from the insurance company, that can go to the general fund. We also have a blight area around the rail. This company has agreed in principle on the lease that they will maintain all those properties and take care of the blight force. Additionally, we're in a 20-year agreement with the railroad that expires next June. Currently, that lease costs the city $0. New railroad policy is we get to pay for that lease now with a 10% inflator every year, and that is a non-negotiable. So as part of this agreement, if it goes through, they've agreed to reimburse the city for all charges on lease, and so it saves us money. We're deficit spending. I don't have the money to pay the railroad on a 20-year lease, I just don't. So as far as the skate park and the splash pad, the developer at day one, when they saw the site, was like, we probably ought to move this. I know it gets used, but we have properties, the police chief and I have talked, we have property directly across from the police department that we could actually move the skate park to. And mind you, this is going to be moved at the cost of the developers, because everybody in play in downtown, that park is within 600 feet. So if we want to, if the skate park staying where it is is more important than trying to implement our ordinance and get some foot traffic downtown and grow our base and expand our town, then we pretty much cratered all of downtown, can't go there. That was the big driver behind this anyway. I walked two days with Ms. Ward and talked to 50, well, 50 people downtown, and 48 said, yep, we wanted a dispensary in our downtown area, two people said, no, absolutely not. I was actually shocked with those numbers. So it's important to me to have a dispensary downtown, and this is where I'm conflicted now, because, you know, we have, we have two options here. And as I weigh them out, I have to look at what I feel is the best benefit to the city, least impact to parking and whatnot downtown, because that's the big thing downtown. We want foot traffic, but parking's an issue, so don't crater parking. It's not real easy to do. I mean, downtown's half empty right now, we fill the streets. So also, the depot comes with a parking lot. It's not exclusive to the depot, anybody can park there, it's public parking, but it should minimize the impact of downtown. Then I jump over to a place like the Bank of America, they have their own parking lot, so that should, again, minimize the impact of downtown. Will it impact some of Raina's customers? Potentially, but they've indicated they'll work with Raina's. So in my thought process, the two best locations in downtown are the depot and the Bank of America, because that should have the least impact on parking and it drives people to downtown, which is how we started this all in the first place. I totally agree that there's room for a dispensary south of town, but at this point in time, I can't in good conscience recommend that because that'll split the difference, and instead of having 500 or 700 people to our downtown, what's the draw going to be? So, you know, like I said, a lot goes into these decisions, this isn't a willy-nilly decision I need to make here. I'm making a decision what I think is best for the city. I'm going to give council a recommendation when they're ready for it, after they talk amongst themselves or ask questions or however they want to proceed with this. But don't think for a minute that I'm trying to do this in a vacuum and not be transparent. I've told everybody and anybody that's called, come down, sit, talk, I've offered to drive... I've offered to drive people in our community up to look at these dispensaries and to look at these cultivations, to educate them, to show them what it all entails. But fundamentally, as a city, we have passed an ordinance, we have set the zoning through planning, and now, as your city manager, I say it's time to execute.
Counsel, just as your legal counsel, I think it's important to note that the item that's on the agenda tonight is just direction. You are not making a final decision. So, regardless of what recommendation the city manager makes to you, that doesn't mean that's the end-all, be-all of existence because there's still an application process pursuant to your ordinance, and a regulatory permit has to be issued. There's still background checks, et cetera. As we mentioned earlier, the DAs that are in front of counsel are drafts. Those still have to be finalized. All the specific terms have to be done based upon the locations, the SEQA, the offers, the situations, everything. So, I just want to make clear to counsel that this is just direction only, and you are not deciding on, it's not a guarantee. Even if you move forward or give direction for one or two particular businesses, that is not the final decision. It will still have to come back to counsel following a public notice and a hearing in accordance with your ordinance.
Yeah, I was going to get to that.
Oh, sorry.
I need to counsel, you guys want to talk about this? I'm going to open it to the public.
Discussion.
I don't want to have to come back up, but I have a comment I want to record. I didn't say that you were not being transparent. This is not personal, this is strictly professional. I said the process of transparency.
Excuse me. Excuse me, okay, thank you. We'll talk about this. Let's get back to it. I'm going to open it to the public right now. Come to the DAs. On the podium.
Good evening. My name is Mariella Childress. I live on 895 Legacy Drive here in Lemoore. Been in this community for over 29 years. I'm a retired marine veteran. I own a business in downtown Lemoore, right on the corner of Fox and D Street. We will be opening that business up September 6th. The bakery called The Coop, The Chicken Coop, The Big Black Chicken. I would really appreciate Valley Pure or one of the other dispensaries coming to downtown Lemoore. I don't know if any of you have stood on D Street lately and seen the lack of foot traffic that we have is dead. I need the foot traffic, I need business. So, I would really appreciate to keep business within arm's reach for security reasons as well. I fully support the two dispensaries hopefully to come to downtown Lemoore. You have my full support. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I was just wondering if the council are going to consider when they make these decisions on any of the grounds of minority businesses? You say, "God, why would you ask the question?" It's because I think you guys probably know, especially in law enforcement, 30% of people incarcerated is minorities, mostly of the black race. And that represents, it's less than, and the rest of the population represents about 5.6, so about 6% more, I mean, about 30% more. I'm saying that is because, you know, when you look at what has happened over the years, something that's been demonized, demonized product has been demonized over the years, and people have been incarcerated and all the different things. With that being said, it's been not a fair playing field when it comes to this space where so many minorities have made this space sought after and made it now legal. And disparity is there's less than 1% of minorities even own. So, you're talking about incarceration over 30%, but less than 1% of minorities own dispensaries. It's a huge disparity. And just want you guys to also just take everything in consideration in your decision process. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ray Madrigal, I live on South Acacia Drive in Lemoore. You guys have a tough decision. And I applaud the city manager for having the courage to bring these things forward to you. We all know why we're here. We try to do the right thing by our city employees. You mentioned our deficit is primarily driven by the salaries that we pay our employees. I highly encouraged a few years ago that we do a salary and compensation study to tell exactly where we were when it came to our city salaries. And in most cases, we were way, way behind. So, I think it was only right that we did what we did, and we pay them a fair wage for what they do. And I think we have the bare minimum of city employees. I don't think we have any more than what we need. And they provide a wonderful service. And some people might say they don't provide enough service. So, that might be where this proposal, these proposals, come into play and will help us with our budgetary deficit. You said we're in a deficit. Is it about a million or so? Is that correct? Where are we?
It's north of that. The budget pass was 3.4.
Okay, so it's a big hole. I think if we were to talk about this three or four years ago, we wouldn't even have been considering it. That's just not, it wouldn't have gone that way. I would have, I would have probably been, had my head chopped off, had I even thought about it. But we are where we are, okay? So, now we got to get out of this hole. I am really impressed with all of the proposals that came forward. Each and every one of them have some very good points. I personally don't think that we should have two downtown. Location is very, very critical to the citizens of Lemoore. The planning commission meeting that we came to showed that. That's why people were here. They did not like where it was located. And I'm surprised that there's this many people here today. When you guys passed this ordinance back in July, there was nobody here. I don't think they knew about it. I think had they known about it, it had made your decision a lot more difficult. But I think you did the right thing by passing that ordinance. Now, we got to think about what's best for the city. You have to think about what's best for the city. One of the people here, I don't remember who it was, said that they got to convince you. That's not right. They have to convince us because you guys represent us, our will. So, you got to think about what's best for us. And I hope other people get up here and talk about this because there was about 20 or 30 people that essentially stopped that last planning commission item. I don't think we have enough room for two downtown. I really like what Mr. Billensley's proposal. He talked about more than just retail. He talked about jobs. He talked about his association with the city. He's a known businessman. When I was excited when I saw him outside, I thought he was going to talk about tri-tip sandwiches. Maybe, maybe we can convince him later. I think it's an opportunity for a local kid to come here who's been a successful businessman. His partners obviously know what they're talking about. And I think that would be a really good compromise if we could figure out one downtown and one out there because that's really where this kind of activity belongs. It's commercial activity, okay? So, maybe we can fix it that way. But I would highly just recommend that you consider all the options. Think about how viable these companies are. They all sound good, and I'm sure they are all really good. But history has shown, if you look around, you read about this, not all these people can get off the ground. They can promise a lot, but do they come through? So, that's what you got to think about too. Look at the financials on these companies. But I highly recommend that we go with Mr. Billensley just because I know his family and what they've done for the city. I know what he's done on his own as a businessman up in Fresno. So, I think that would be an excellent compromise.
I'd like to slide, former mayor. Thank you.
That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rogers?
I have a comment. My name's Ed Rogers. I live at 951 Tulliky Court. Quite a few people in this room know me as the old gray-haired guy. I've come to all their meetings, I've been to every one of them. I'm also a member of the planning commission. Last week, when we had everyone show up at that meeting to voice their opinion, I found it interesting, and I'm asked in this committee here tonight, and you guys as council members, we had two of our planning commissioners had to leave and weren't even allowed to be in the room because they lived too close to what we were talking about. So, my question is, I may open a can of worms, but it seems like I hear conflict of interest on one of the groups that's here tonight, one being related to another person. So, I'd ask the city attorney, is that a conflict of interest or? But these people just live too close. Here we have blood relation. So, I don't know, I'm just asking transparency. Just I want it crystal clear that I understand what's happening. So, that's my opinion.
When this, when this was asked, like I know you're talking about with my brother, the mayor, his integrity is so strong that he said he would recuse himself from even having a vote. Like I said, when it's about my daughter, I've been involved in this over eight years because she's on CBD because she suffers from dark beds. So, the mayor, and I think everyone knows that, he said he would have nothing to do. He said, "Lorenzo, no matter what happens, that you know I'm reclusing myself and I wouldn't even have a vote." So, just thought you ought to know that.
If you were to recuse, that wouldn't even allow you to hear anything.
Okay, anybody, anybody else from the public?
Counsel, do you want me to address that question? So, a conflict of interest is individual to the individual members. If there is a true financial conflict of interest, it is my recommendation, if you attended my trainings, and I know, Mr. Rogers, that you did, that you recuse yourself from the podium and you would leave the room so there's no appearance of influence by the member. My understanding is, at least at this time, I know of no financial conflict of interest that exists. There are other types of conflicts of interest, and those are decided upon by the individual. Counsel, any further questions on that?
Yes.
It may be a perceived conflict of interest, but not an actual conflict of interest.
Correct, there's a common law conflict of interest, which is perceived.
Could he choose to abstain based on a perceived conflict?
There's supposed to be an actual conflict of interest.
But the general public may see an actual conflict when there isn't.
That's true. It could be a perceived conflict of interest. There's a common law conflict of interest under the law, which basically means that if an individual feels, in general terms, if an individual feels that they do not have the ability based upon whatever the factual circumstances are, that they not have the ability to be fair and impartial, that is a common law conflict of interest. And only the individual can speak to that. I cannot, I cannot opine on that.
Well, I'm just saying the general public is going to think, surely there, there's going to be some bias there because it's a family member.
I agree with you, council member. The, I cannot direct someone, in this case, Mr. Mayor Neal, to recuse himself. I do see the perceived conflict of interest. Whether there's an actual conflict of interest, that is up to whether the mayor feels that he can be fair and impartial. And if he cannot, then I do recommend that he recuse himself.
Okay. I have a question. So, I like this one. Not only there's a conflict of interest, you can look at it like that, but it's two individuals that could be a conflict of interest, which is, Mr. German has a son that's doing this as well as I have a brother that's doing this. So, that's two, it ain't one, it ain't just me. And I just want to verify that. And I will, I will step out when it comes to that. I said that in the beginning, I told the city manager that as well, so.
Mayor, and I apologize for interrupting you, but if you are going to declare a conflict of interest, I would recommend that you step out now.
Okay, absolutely.
I just want to make a comment. He pointed out that there's a conflict of interest with myself and my son. I am not a voter. I'm not sitting up there to place a vote. I have absolutely nothing to do with it. My son has absolutely nothing to do with it. Eddie.
You guys are related.
Doesn't matter.
Any other public comment? Two.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Brosser. I live at 1494 Cedar Lane in Lemoore. Like many, I'm deeply concerned about the effect that having a dispensary in Lemoore could have on the fabric and character of our city. But I also found the presentations tonight very interesting and very informative, and I thank the presenters for them. One common thread that went through them, though, that wasn't answered was in the detailed security plans, the dependence upon the Lemoore Police Department. There'd be live feeds to the police department, there'd be panic buttons to the police department, there'd be close hand-in-hand working with the police department. Does our police department have the capacity to take on the extra burden that one or two dispensaries would place upon them? And that would be my question to you, and if I'm allowed to place that question to the police department. Is that something that we can take on as a city so that we can do this safely, assuming that the council assumes that this is a good idea?
So, yeah, I can answer that for you. We charge a regulatory fee for every permit we issue, and that is going to pay for some, for additional staffing at PD. It's one full-time position to help with the background checks. One thing with this industry is there, there is a lot of security involved in small communities like ours. There's not, not a lot of crime that comes with it. You look in places like Woodlake and Klinga, their crime is not on the rise after they've opened dispensaries. So, although the, those options are there, yes, there is live feed to PD so they can just monitor, and then panic buttons. But it'd be like any other business, they can have direct access to PD too and banks and things. And it's a service we provide our businesses and our residents. So, the only thing is, is we don't get to charge everybody else a fee to cover the cost of it like we can with the cannabis.
Thank you, just got a quick comment. I'm obviously not from around here, but I have spent a lot of time walking the streets and talking to business owners, and they all say the same thing, whether it's the bakery shop or it's the bar, it's the restaurant, they want more people walking the streets because that's going to impact the downtown area. And my concern would be, you know, awarding dispensary licenses to two companies that just have big car parks is probably not going to achieve that objective of really creating a vibrant downtown community where people are walking around. That was my comment, thank you.
Hi, my name is Patricia Matthews, 195 Westboro Wood Lane. Two things that I wanted to talk about, something that may not be common knowledge to all of you up there. There's a small high school in town that uses the train depot for all of their dances because they're so small, they can't, they don't have the student population to pay for the bigger venues. The only other place that they have to go to that's affordable for them is in Hanford. And it kind of sucks if you're in high school. In Lemoore, you have to go to Hanford for your dances. They've had, have had to do that. But that's just something maybe to keep into consideration or maybe the company that's looking at taking that over for them to take into consideration as well. I know they're taking in the splash pad and the skate park, but that's probably something that none of you knew up there, that that was used for that. So, just kind of keep them in mind. Another thing too I wanted to bring up is I noticed that only one company that was here was offering more of a, it's a small percentage more, but if we're talking about that size of money, that small percentage could add up to a lot. So, just something that maybe you might want to consider as well, if we're talking revenue.
Pamela Hanson, 183 East Court, Lemoore. Hi. You mentioned a couple of things. One thing that the state allows for this to happen, that was a choice that was made by a majority of the state and that were called to implementation. Also, that among the city that were somehow supposed to mandate representation of different kinds of businesses, is my understanding. There are some businesses here that are not being represented here in the city. And I feel like that they may be a better stewardship of our attention and the possibility of foot traffic that would be, foot traffic that may be more desirable among our city and with my children and my grandchildren. And I would love to have my grandchildren grow up in the city of Lemoore, but it certainly is a concern with the type of foot traffic that we may be having. I've been a part of the holiday stroll for many years. Love being a part of that. Love seeing the foot traffic that it draws in. There are events that... a part of that. Love seeing the foot traffic that it draws in. There are events that don't involve drugs and alcohol that can bring a lot of foot traffic. You're going to bring families into downtown Lemoore. So when we're talking about implementation, okay, maybe you're saying that this has to come. My heart says no. And I'm sure that there are some that, that will disagree with me, and I understand that. But this is not what I want my children to be around on a regular basis. Down at the depot area, we talked about the skate park. You talked about the splash pad. There's a movie theater right downtown, walking distance. Lemoore has walking distance in many different directions, and that's been my pleasure to walk downtown into many different directions. I'm part of that foot traffic. I don't want that. I won't be walking downtown if that's part of Lemoore. Talking about the, the costs and planning and understanding a deficit, there, I appreciate the fact that we stepped down for one of the trips for training, because I understand that. I appreciate that. Dollar for dollar, let's take a look at it. But when we're looking dollar for dollar, we're looking, we did look at police, I heard that mentioned, hospitals, education. You're going to have more troubles in all of those areas. And I also heard mention about revitalizing San Francisco. I've walked the streets of San Francisco. I walked it once. I'm not going back to the streets of San Francisco. It broke my heart to walk the streets of San Francisco. It is a lovely city when you're driving through, but my foot traffic is not going to San Francisco unless I'm just going to the Giants game. Side note. It is not revitalizing it. So I just want that awareness to happen. My quick ear, I hope it was a quick ear. When we're talking about the dispensaries was the lounge. Okay. So that we have the lounges, and if they don't have a lounge, where are they going to go? They're going to go to the hotels and motels. Right around the corner from my house, right around the corner from my house, right around the corner from a school, right around the corner from your education department. Just some things to consider that maybe you're not living in that area. Just some things to consider. I understand there are some medicinal benefits. I just know that things that can be medicinal can be misused. Anytime I go to Costco to get my decongestant, a decongestant, I must show my driver's license. I must show my driver's license to get a certain amount. But there's always someone who can misuse that. There will always be someone who will do that. It won't be the law abiding citizens that will do that. And I'm sure that you will still have that. I just feel like there's going to be a lot more freedom in which to do that. So considering where to put it, two downtown, absolutely not. A one downtown, not my preference in our area. I understand you need money. My quality of life, I could live a little bit poorer and be happy. I've done it. People know me. They have, they know that I have. So I appreciate your time. But please understand that money in your pocket doesn't always bring the joy that you would like.
Any other public comment? Closed. The discussion is on the directing the city manager to continue negotiations. So do we have a discussion on that?
Well, just like, let's see here. Just like Patricia Matthews, Tegan Winters, Mrs. Landris, Mr. Killner, Shelley Reese, and Willard Rudearmel, all these companies, they're going to, they all seem like they're going to do good for our town, just like all those people would have done good on our council. And Mr. Reed. Sorry, I just saw you sitting there. I would have liked to have you up here too, dang it. That'd have been something else. But I don't, I don't think there's a bad direction almost really to go here.
You know, I believe it was Mr. Reed, and I believe your name's Tom, but you know, I'm kind of new to the game. You brought up a great point earlier, that there's a whole lot of information to disseminate in a short time. And I've read through those applications multiple times. But there was more that was, I was informed more this evening than just reading through some applications. And, and I kind of can appreciate, you know, is there a hurry? Obviously, I want to beat Hanford too. If y'all know me, I want to beat Hanford. And then I think it's important for the businesses to get in before Hanford does, because you get the clients in, and, and, and that's where they're going to go. They're going to go where they feel comfortable. And, and they know that they get a good product. And, but I'm not sure, in, in my mind, if I know the two best dispensaries slash, and I know there's some manufacturing aspects to it at this moment, to be perfectly honest.
I've listened to, I've read everything was in the agenda package as everybody else that's been out there for everybody else to read. I've listened to the presentations today, and I feel I can make a decision. So I'm just waiting on everybody to make the determinate and then make a motion.
Well, I understand the motion is as written.
So, so counsel, it's just direction and consensus to allow the city manager to send a letter to the, to individual, to at least two, I believe, of the.
Did you have direction or no?
He's, I believe the city manager has a recommendation for you. But it would just be direction. I think they've given you direction, except for which two, if you want to select particular order. And then consensus to allow him to give them a letter saying that they are continuing the negotiations. Again, it's not a guarantee that they will, their permit will be approved. It's just for financing purposes, my understanding.
Their, the letter would be telling them that they're continuing in the process of making a decision or?
The way the ordinance is written, it, it doesn't become final until a 10 day public notice, and it goes in front of council with a successful application process with all your background and a development agreement. At that point, it becomes final.
So do you need direction on one or two? Or you're just going to come back with that?
Well, tonight, we're, we're seeking direction for two. It's, that's a pleasure, counsel. If they want to do one, two, you could give me a backup in case one falls through throughout the negotiation or the process. I don't know. That's kind of up to you guys.
Do you want company names, or do you want just direction to select two?
I would prefer company names, because although it's not final, there's a lot goes into this to get the dispensaries ready to go and open. And it would be contingent upon, you know, a successful application process, a signed development agreement that we can all come to, or project development agreement, sorry, that we could agree to. And they're doing, they would be moving forward at their own risk, basically. This gives them enough confidence to go to, to their groups and investors to say, yep, we're in the, we're in the playing Lemoore, contingent upon our application process and our project development agreement.
Well, the way I see it, if you want foot traffic in downtown Lemoore, there was two companies that stood out. One, they wanted to be a bank, oh, be a bank building. And the other one was the, the old Stretmore Train Depot that we hauled down here for thousands of dollars years ago. So those two would be in the running if you want traffic downtown. If you don't want traffic downtown, that's something we have to discuss as a city council.
I agree.
So, and those two companies were Valley Pure and.
Natural Healing Center.
So we want to discuss those two or throw those two out? Do we want business downtown, or do we want business out in the outskirts?
That, that would be the two that I would nominate.
I would like to have business downtown.
So you would, would you like a motion with those two names or just a consensus?
It's direction. Direction, I've got it.
Okay, the direction is Valley Pure and.
Can I interject? Did, did we vote on that? Should we vote on that?
No. So, so counsel, I'm, in particular, I'm, I'm seeking you give direction. There's too many factors that's still in flux for you to take a vote, a meaningful vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Including SEQA and the application process.
Okay.
And the specifics.
Okay. Thank you.
The Natural Healing Center and Valley Pure.
Okay.
This is not a decision that's going to make everybody in the city happy, but we have to make a decision based on what's best in our view for the city. And I think, I think we have basically three, maybe four people agree with that, so.
And no conflict of interest.
So are we done with this? Shall we get the mayor out of the doghouse? The presence is required. I didn't know I'd be doing this tonight.
You're doing a great job.
The last item on the agenda.
Okay. I think that, I think we'll go to five dash six. That was three dash four.
Yeah, three dash four.
I'm going to get to five dash six now. Okay. Approval Train Depot Commercial Lease Agreement between the City of Lemoore and Valley Pure, Lemoore LLC.
So good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This was the item that was moved earlier. This is an item for lease. That would be a, a two-year lease of the train depot. It was contingent upon, the lease is, it is contingent, the lease is contingent upon a successful permitting process for a, for a dispensary. Now, that being said, they will do all the, the improvements at risk. So I kind of listed out the benefits earlier. We receive $24,000 annually in rent from that facility. It will get a facelift and an upgrade. Kind of the, the agreement is that the outside will remain the same. There'll be some minor work inside to get it up to code and ADA and stuff like that. So from the outside, it'll still look like a train depot. We're fundamentally not changing the outside of the building. Fresh coat of paint would be about it. The benefits again are, it's kind of a blight area. One thing I didn't mention earlier is our current lease with the railroad goes from E to F Street and Fox to Heinland. The new lease will go all the way down to 18th Avenue. So it'll encumber where all the, the truck traffic is, is parked. Now, because that is private property and the rail wouldn't post it, we couldn't enforce the parking there. But there has been concerns from council that represents that area and residents in that area of the, the blight and the, the truck noise. So we'll be able to help clean up our blight, and we are working on a transition plan. And part of this, we have some other city properties. The hopes is that we have a couple companies that are negotiating terms on some acres the city has that'll be coming forth in the future. Is maybe we could carve out an acre or two of parking lot for those trucks, because the, the group of trucks have indicated they would be willing to pay the city for a secure place to park. So trying to kill a couple birds with one stone here.
Counsel, the lease is a two-year lease to be renewed annually for up to 13-year terms unless otherwise written into the, unless otherwise noticed. And the lease does, it is conditioned upon the approval of both the city's issuing a regulatory permit and the state issuing a permit. Should either of those two things not occur, then the lease would terminate 30 days after those occurrences. But I believe that the way the lease is written is that the leasie pays the rent upfront for one year. So.
That's it.
All right, we don't go to city council reports and requests?
No.
Any comments from council? I'm going to send it to the public.
Jeff Garcia, 162 D Street, business owner. As a condition of the lease, is it possible to have them concurrently relocate the splash pad and the, and the skate park to city property?
I believe that is the intent. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
So that it's, that wouldn't necessarily be a condition of the lease. That would be a condition of the development agreement, the project development agreement and application process for the permit.
I would like to also echo what Mr. Garcia, Dr. Garcia just said, that development agreement is very vague and ambiguous, and that's not a good thing for cities to get into contracts like that. I would highly recommend that whatever you do as far as the skate park and the splash pad be put in very, very specifically. Because what they think, I think I heard him mention, they were going to put a nice one in somewhere else. Their nice might not be my nice or your nice. So the only way you do that is, is putting that specifically in that agreement.
Yeah. Mr. Matt, one thing we, we did do upfront when we thought we might have to move some of these, these attractions was we got in touch with Tim Welsh, who I'm sure you all know is like the, the godfather skateboarder, all those kids over there. And if it has to be relocated or when it relocates, they're very excited to be part of the process. And I know they've been asked by the developer to partake in that process because they are the recipients of it, as well as the Rotary who donated the park in the first place. We will absolutely move the monuments and the Rotary still have credit for the park. Thank you.
When we're, just for clarification, when we talk about the skate park, you're also talking about the basketball courts.
So under the, under the law, the basketball courts do not, you couldn't deem the courts a teen center like you can with the skate park, but that's definitely something we can, we can negotiate. I know right now, we have had active discussions about the splash pad and the skate park. I'd be more than happy to go back and talk about the basketball courts as well.
Well, I mean, it's in the same area, so.
Yeah.
Anybody else from the public want to expound on this? Bringing them back to the council? Got a motion?
I motion to, oh, go ahead, Mr. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I motion to approve the three dash four.
Second. What was it, five, six now?
It's five, six now.
Okay, five, six now.
Five, six.
Who said seven? Okay, Mr. Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Blue?
Aye.
Mr. Scody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion case. Okay, now, catching up to that thing. Okay. City Council Reports and Requests, Section Six, six dash one, City Council Report. Mr. Lyons?
Yeah, I've, I've got nothing to report from my, my boards right now.
Yeah, I've, I've got nothing to report from my, my boards right now. They, as a matter of fact, I go to them tomorrow. But, Mr. Plourd, uh, I'd like to congratulate you on your third appointment. I can't believe you did it. Um, Mrs. Matthews, thank you for being here today. Mrs. Winters, I saw her here. Um, Mrs. Landris, Mr. Killner, Mrs. Reese, and Mr. Rudarmel. You know, I commend all you guys for putting your name in the hat to do this. It's, uh, not quite as easy as a job as one would think, but, uh, I do like our new council. I like it a lot. It feels like we were in a bit of a slippery slope earlier, and Mr. Plourd found a nice way off of it, and I, I really feel like this council is gonna work very well. I'm really excited to be a part of it. I really am. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
I, I too would like to, to welcome Mr. Plourd, um, to the city council. I, I voted for you the two times that you were on the ballot. I, I go back and you can go look, I promise. Um, you can go back if you can figure that out. I tried to go back to the record. I can only get back to 2016. But nonetheless, um...
I voted too, so.
That's true. Uh, I know we have committees up here, and it's to my understanding that with Ms. Blair and, and her situation, that we all weren't on a committee, because she was not allowed to be on a committee, so some of us had, that Mr. Plourd, right now, being the new city councilman, even though there might be something for the mayor pro temp, that we need to kind of go over committees again as a, as a council, so that we can all be on a committee representing the city council and not just four of us. Um, so that's that. Um, I haven't been on any committees yet. I've, I've, I've been up here for two weeks, almost exactly to the date, and I've appreciated the opportunity. Um, it, it is a little bit overwhelming, and I know it's, it's, you know, I don't think, I, I have been to city council meetings, and, and I know that I, I haven't attended them all that often, but part of being a volunteer fireman is showing up on Tuesday so you can train. Um, but I, I have shown up, so make no mistake about that. Um, it seems as though there's still, even though I, 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 I like these people up here. I, obviously, I needed to get to know people better. It's hard to get to really know somebody in two weeks, but I'm gonna make that, um, a priority to get to know people and, and to help better this, the city and do what I, in my opinion, and, and, and the people that I represent in District C, their opinions as well. And at some juncture, I am gonna get on, I don't have social media. I, I don't like it. Um, I had it 15 years ago for like my class reunion, and I got rid of it, because I, or they got rid of it, because I hadn't been active in like 14 years and nine months. Okay? But, um, I, I would like to have a town hall, old-fashioned meeting, welcome to everybody in Lemoore, and come and, and talk to me, because obviously, there's a lot going on in the city right now, and, and people have different viewpoints, and you have three minutes here, and, and we really can't talk. So come, um, I'm not sure when I'm gonna do it, but we'll put it as, I, I spoke with , uh, city manager, um, about how we can do that without me having a city council, because there's so much name-calling and bad stuff with the social media that it, uh, my feelings have been hurt, and, and I want to overcome that. So, um, I will have that, and everybody's welcome. So come, pick my brain, I'll have some coffee and I'll have some waters, um, but I'll announce it, and we'll put on the city webpage. Um, I'm gonna talk to Mr. Martin about my Lemoore leader, uh, Hanford Sentinel, whatnot. So please, everybody feel inclined to come. Thank you.
Excuse me, member, council members called. Do you want to seek consensus from council to direct the city manager to put the committee, the committees back on at the next council meeting?
That is affirmative.
Is there consensus from the council to add the committees to the next agenda item for, uh, review?
To submit?
To, to select those to sit on committees for the...
Boards, boards and commissions.
I, I would recommend that, that we all take a look at the current matrix and see what committees we'd like to serve on or definitely not want to serve on, and supply those inputs to whomever, who, who would get that input.
So, the mayor.
The mayor?
The mayor, the last time we did boards and commission, um, we sent out the list to everybody. They kind of marked it up, primary, secondary, where they'd like to be, and then it went to the mayor and mayor pro temp, and they kind of went through it, and then...
I, I would recommend that we do that, submit our inputs to the city manager, and he forwards them to the mayor, and the mayor can, uh, analyze it.
And if I may, just add on to that, is, is because I know what we did during the elect, you know, when people got elected, and, um, if I remember correctly, the city manager sent the information out, and he sent the matrix out, and then, then at that point in time, you know, it's, you know, it came from him, then we fed it back to him, and then it went to the prop, because I think we have something in someplace written that gives us our guidelines on how we're supposed to do that. So my recommendation is we go to those guidelines and follow them. So, you know, it's the same thing, but just make sure we follow them all, so there's no conflict. So... Now he's got consensus.
Yeah, we all agree. Okay.
Yeah, I have my turn. Just want to thank, thank you for, for coming up here and doing this. Uh, appreciate it, really do appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
I, I really do think the people of Lemoore appreciate. I ask the people of the city of Lemoore, get behind us, need your input, okay? Um, thank everybody who applied, okay? I don't have anything to report out. I do want to say something. There are some things here said, and I, I've kept my mouth shut, but there are some things here that have been said in media, uh, that is incorrect, okay? I am not a police officer, okay? I was a volunteer in policing, and I resigned over a year ago, two years ago, because I used, I did volunteering policing, was an honest warrant officer. I jumped in the patrol car, and I'd go out on Friday nights, and I'd patrol the town. If I saw something, I'd call it on the radio. I patrolled the town to keep people safe, okay? I'll do it again when I get off of council. I am not affiliated with the police department, so I hope everybody understands that. Please understand it. If you have a question, come and talk to me. Please come and talk to me. The stuff that was written in the Hand for Sentinel was incorrect, okay? That was talked about, about the three other council members, there was no coup, okay? That is incorrect. That is a lie, okay? The other thing that was said, and, and I didn't even want to say anything, I just, just wanted it to go away. There was just, I just wished to God it went away, but it was brought up again, okay? And I have proof that is, that it is a lie, okay? But I just think our city doesn't need this. We already went through so much, and here we are today. The only thing I asked to do is once again, and I'm gonna beat it to death a little bit, was to have two other council members have the right to make their vote. That's it. It wasn't racial, it wasn't political, it wasn't nothing. Once again, I tell you the honest God's truth. Before I do that, I would resign this council seat, and that's the honest God's truth, okay? If, if somebody has proof that I did that, bring it up forth, and I'll resign, okay? I will resign, bring it forth. It really hurts me. I really, integrity and ethics is my key thing, okay? Doing what's right for the people. And I, I, I thank you for giving me this time to talk, and if I offended anybody, I, I apologize. Was not my, was not my goal, and it was not my goal tonight, become the mayor of the City of Lemoore. There was no hidden agenda. There was none. So that's all I have to say, and I'll never talk about it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Bluer?
Well, I, I think, uh, we, we've got a kernel of, of, that can grow here. We can all work as a team and get something done as, I, I think you, you know, if we can disagree without being disagreeable, if you want to look at it that way, I think we can get a lot of things done and, uh, you know, take personalities out of it and just look at what's best for the city, and that's hard. I have trouble sometimes. Uh, I, I, I have a military background and, you know, uh, the state votes for things that are kind of, uh, they were illegal, you know? Now, now they, uh, uh, now they just kind of wink at it, and I'm sure one of these days they're gonna make it mandatory, you know? So, uh, for example, the governor just signed a bill today, uh, making, uh, changing the standards from reasonable force to necessary force, and, and, uh, I just don't want us to turn out like England, where they take their guns away from the police officers. And that's, you know, who knows, maybe that'll happen someday, but as I babble on, I, I just want to say, uh, let's, in the future, look at what's best for the City of Lemoore, not put personalities involved, and just press on, and, and, uh, let's make the city a better place to live. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Bluer. I want to say to all my constituents, I, I'm speechless right now, um, because, really, really be honest with you, I, um, I look at what took place today, and I've seen all the people, far as, uh, county board of supervisors, Richard Viley, teacher at Hanford High, Brian Neves, my brother, my uncle, teachers, um, spoke on my behalf. Um, I don't know, I, I'm gonna tell you, I do work from the heart, and I, I'm sorry if I offended anybody. Uh, I'm letting you know, Mr. Brown, I'm sorry for offending you. We could be more transparent, and I'm gonna try my best to be more transparent to you. I, I'm asking you for forgiveness for all have I done, okay? Um, I'm gonna let everybody know, we're gonna, we're gonna work through this, and I think we have a good council. I don't think, I think we need to push for positive, uh, work as a team. Working as a team is not bringing up the past, but you can't go forward in reverse. And so I'm looking to go forward, and I just thank the NAACP, everybody, there's so many people that spoke on my behalf, and it took my breath away. And, um, thank all you guys. I thank all of you. And even though I didn't vote for some of you, I thank you. I thank you, and you, Mr. Brown, and I thank you, Mr. Lyons. I can't say your name really, Chris, right? So I, I just, I'm, I'm, it's like I'm speaking in tongues up here.
It's happened my whole life, don't worry about it.
Mr. Scody. And so I just want to let you guys all know, I appreciate and I love all you guys, and with God's help, united we stand, divided we fall. The time is 10, 11. Adjourn.